I call to order, please, so pleased to be on the set. Call to order, the Tuesday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, Planning Board's only Board of Adjustment of Flemington meeting. Please rise as you are looking. My pleasure.
America and to the public, which stands one nation under a indivisible liberty and justice.
Right, this is in person and virtual meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Public Meetings Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this in person and virtual meeting is provided by way of publication and the Hundred and County Democrats and the Canadian newspapers on about January twenty third, twenty twenty five, and January eighteenth, twenty twenty first, nineteen ninety six. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough of Flemington municipal building on the Saturday Park Avenue and any handicapped accessible entrances there too. Posted on municipal website, provided to the municipal plot and distribution for persons if any requesting copies of the state. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial procedure, any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board and I will consider in which in a decision. And the core appropriate judicial due date there must be maintained at full time. Thank you. Carla, can we, can you do the roll call, please?
Yep, absolutely, I can take care of that. Mayor Carroll?
I'm here.
Councilperson Fasaro?
Here.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Chairman Giffen?
Here.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Show? Mr. Slanger is excused, I understand. Mr. Dashna?
Here.
Mr. Echol?
Here.
Mr. Hain?
Here.
Attorney Kazinsky here. Mr. Clerico?
Yeah.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
Mr. Troutman?
Here.
And Mr. Sordillo?
Here.
Thank you. Right, before we get into our agenda, I already have to change it. And so I would like if somebody could, I can have a motion to change.
I mean, then the agenda. I think your motion to amend the agenda to add in nominations and election of anybody's chair since it was designed eight weeks ago.
Thank you. Do I get a second on that? We have to vote on that. Are we doing all in favor for that one?
Yep, that's fine.
All in favor?
I make a motion to nominate Jeff Dashna as vice chair.
Second?
Sorry.
Everybody wants to second us.
I know, right? Alright, so we've got, I've got mayor and councilwoman, motion and second. Mr. Dashna, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, roll call, Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Chairman Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show? Mr. Dashna?
Yes.
And Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, you're sitting in the right spot.
Do you want to say anything?
I'm good.
Okay, I wanted to give the option. Alright, let's move along with the rest of the agenda then. Our next item is Resolution twenty twenty five oh six, which is appointments of conflict attorney to deal with item ten, new eleven. Mr. Sordillo, I think everybody on the board received information about Mr. Sordillo. And so, does anybody have any concerns before we move forward with a vote for resolution to appoint Mr. Sordillo for this purpose?
Questions, comments, concerns? Alright, need a motion, a second?
I make a motion.
A second.
Who was the second, was that?
Echol.
Okay. Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Chairman Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dashna?
Yes.
And Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright.
You're in it, Joe, there's no getting out of it now.
I even talked to the known CDC cats in the cemetery.
Okay. Melissa, did you want to share that with us?
We're talking to your kids.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, fascinating to know, but ads in the cemetery. Okay, alright, our next item, item three is a time for public comments. As always, it is a time for public comments for items not currently on the agenda. Does anybody in person, oh, I'm going to try to see any raised hands online. There was no other attendees other than the panelists. Which would show up here.
Yeah, showing zero.
Being done, we'll move on to item four, mayor comments, please.
Um, I just want to bring everybody's attention to council meeting last night, which will be on YouTube probably in another day or two. The council president announced during his comments that the retail service ordinance that Planeford put forward last year and the council tabled indefinitely was going to be taken over by the council. Specifically, Councilwoman Engelhardt, Councilman Levitt and himself. And that they would be working on that and then submitting it back to the planning board. I did respond to him that in twenty twenty three, when I put forward an ordinance to repeal an ordinance that the prior mayor had put forward directly, creating a housing overlay on Route twelve, that the same councilwoman publicly objected to creating an ordinance from the council rather than from the planning board. And then a former member of our planning board showed up at the public hearing and likewise chimed in that all ordinances dealing with zoning should be coming only from the planning board. And I did ask the question rhetorically, what has changed? The other thing that I got, that I'm not sure the entire planning board knows, is that our chair of the planning board did request a meeting weeks and weeks and weeks ago with the council president to discuss that retail and service ordinance. And he not just declined, but refused to meet with her. Last night, he said that that was his prerogative, that he was going to choose who he'd meet with. I think elected officials have an obligation to meet with pretty much anybody who asks for a meeting, even non constituents, but certainly a constituent and certainly a member of our board and certainly a chair of one of our boards. So I am, I'm a little nonplussed over all of this and I would urge all of the members of this body to watch the beginnings of that council meeting when it comes up through Councilwoman Fasaro's comments, which followed that discussion, for lack of a better word. But, you know, I mean, it's his opinion, my opinion. You know, I don't know how all of you feel about this, but there was a lot of work done on that. We were willing to go back to the table and take back their comments and continue plodding through it. And he did start by saying he thought there was a lot of really good stuff in that ordinance. But he wouldn't go into any detail about what they objected to. I think the lack of understanding about our town compared to a Lambeauville or a Milford or a French Town or Clinton is that we are not a river town. We are a county seat that competes for on our main street with attorneys. And I don't mean that pejoratively at all, but the business of the county is in town. And, you know, we have a lot of lawyers taking up a lot of valuable main street time and other offices. And all of them roll up their sidewalks when the county closes at four thirty. So, you know, you can fill them all up, you can have lots of vibrant attorneys' offices and real estate offices and architects and whatever. But it's dark at night and they're not open on weekends. And that's really the bottom line about what we were trying to bridge us in the ordinance and, and, you know, find places that were more conducive to that, where it wasn't going to affect, you know, you'd go walking at night on Main Street and there's lots of lights and then it's just dark because it's offices. So I'm, you know, we'll see what happens and I just wanted to just let the planning board know that occurred last night. And like I said, I urge you to just check out the first half an hour of the meeting.
I appreciate your support, man, for the lack of meeting from the council president. I don't take that personally, I just take it as a chair item. It's not to me, it's for a chair. And also I take that on behalf of the whole board and like you say, with a committee that did the work at the time. I would also like to point out, if the council president or other council members are listening, they can pass this on, that in the spirit of what we were trying to do there, a lot of them had photos taken recently of it called Mr. Pops. And I don't know, everybody remembers that that came up last year for us, that they wanted to put something different there. They, we were almost threatened that, and we didn't allow that to go through, there'd be a lawsuit against that. But we stuck to implementing the ordinances as they were written and as we understood them, for the good of the town. We didn't allow that to go through and then now we have a retail, thriving new retail business in that spot.
What he was saying.
And that's the intention of where the ordinance was going.
But he was saying last night several times that we were going to be sued, the town was going to be sued if we allowed the ordinance to go through. It's the first time I'd heard that. Like, people talk about suing the planning board and suing the town all the time, all the time. And, you know, okay, you know, and, well, I mean, I don't even have a comment on that. I hadn't heard anything, our attorney hadn't heard anything about being sued. So, you know, people can talk about it, but.
But I will say on behalf of the board, hopefully if anybody wants to say anything else, please let me speak incorrectly for you. But I'm totally still open, our job is to work on zone and for the good of the town, work on all ordinances, implement them as we are able and as we see fit. And, but we're still open, completely open to working with whatever the council wants to achieve in town. All of us are just here for the good of the town at the end of the day and want the best for our town and city and with Main Street also.
That's it. I want to say. And I think, I mean, I just have a read that everybody got moved up, right?
That was last meeting.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Item five, council comments, please.
In addition to what the mayor has stated, level of disappointment as I am a member of the council. I have not been privy to any of these discussions amongst the other council members. I've deliberately taken myself out of it. I'm all about transparency and people being able to see the sausage being made in public and the public being able to see us have discussions and work through issues and define what's the best approach for the borough to take. And just generally disappointed. In addition to that, the budget approval and introduction has been moved back, that will now be handled over to special meetings. We will be, I will be working with the chair and vice chair to fine tune what's in there for this planning board. And I really welcome and hope that the community opens their eyes and gets engaged in what's going on and is asking for clarity, for truth and for things to happen in sunlight. And that's it.
Thank you, can I just add to your, kind of just mention that like the budget you mentioned, we underspent our budget last month, last year on the board, just to let what was, what was allowed, we underspent that. And a lot of the things that this board has been trying to do with the checklist and other items is with the intention of saving money for the town, like making meetings go quicker, having the checklist minimizes the amount of hours the engine and clerical was to spend doing those completely. So therefore that gets passed on to the applicants and the town.
And we did that, we did that underneath, we did that last year and we still came in under budget. So if you hear that anybody out there or anybody on the planning board, please be aware, we did not go over the budget, we aren't out there spending on drunken sales.
There are accusations being made from some of the council members that the budget is way over, way overcharged. So, and I'm, you know, personally now going and auditing several of our professionals' bills because to make sure that they were coded properly. For example, our planner is the only, the only professional in the town hired by both the planning board and the council. So, you know, she's been doing an awful lot of work on behalf of the council on the Union Hotel project. And that should be charged to the council and not the planning board. And yet the council line item was only used, I think, I think you only charged two thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars or something like that. And that's just like, tells me that it got taken out of the wrong place. So I am personally auditing the bills right now to make sure that, you know, what, what, what should have gone where got there. Just like stop, stop people from reading line items and not really understanding what they're reading in the budget.
Like, that's it? Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll move to item six, HPC comments. Dennis, you had a meeting since we last met, I believe.
We had a meeting last week and two items I wanted to mention. One, we are once again pursuing this state historic CLG certified local government designation based on John Hatch's conversation with the State Historic Preservation Commission. We need to tweak our historic preservation ordinance to get CLG approval, they're minor tweaks. John's going to work with Beth on the process and what's needed to draft the ordinance change, which would have to go through the Borough Council and the planning board. So we, we're trying to get that, we're, we have CLG designation, you know, as soon as we can this year, but we're excited about that. The other thing I wanted to mention, we are having the Historic House Tour on June twenty first. We're really excited, we have five new homes this year on the tour. We also have the historic courthouse and the jail cell block. And we also got the old egg auction for the tour this year. And we will have two trolleys, we're always looking for volunteers, anyone that volunteers, they get a free ticket. So if you're interested, let me know, or if there's anyone in the audience that's interested, hpc@historicflemington.com. That's it for me.
Can I just add one thing to Dennis's report? The Hundred and County Historic Society will be opening a, they're going to start doing exhibits. They've had a permanent exhibit up for years and that is changing now. So there is an exhibit opening on June fourteenth, so it will be open for the house tours. And it's basically things out of their archive collection that have to do with weddings, including showing six historic wedding dresses. Most of them are back into the eighteen hundreds, top hats and dowry items and travel items and calling cards and things like that. So they'll be open also, I don't know if they're part of the list officially, Dennis, but.
We've notified them, so hopefully, that sounds great, thank you.
It's exciting because they're going to start doing exhibitions like either two or three or four a year, changing that whole downstairs area. So they're having, it'll be ours every Saturday afternoon.
Great.
Sign of the other entities in the town feeding off of what the HPC and the house tours are doing and opening up and seeing that it's a great time to be open and showcase the town. I love it, excellent. Dennis, have anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to item seven, professional reports.
I don't think I have any new Flemington specific information, but I would say things that are ongoing is working on the Affordable Housing Plan. And I'll be here in the month of April to talk to you guys about how that will be structured and, and then we'll be working on adoption of a plan prior to June thirtieth, we can submit that to the state as, as is required. If it hasn't happened already, I will say that your affordable housing obligation that was executed by the council via resolution that should be approved any day by the court, I don't think that order has been issued yet or perhaps it just hasn't made its way to me yet. And that's sort of as expected, but I would say it's still a good thing. So now that that phase for Flemington is over, your obligation is confirmed, we'll move forward and prepare the plans, that's one thing. The other aspect of state planning that is just ongoing is cross acceptance. And I think Hundred and County is, is leading that effort as well. I haven't, I haven't participated in that thus far, but it's, it's an ongoing process that I, that's going to be up in traction about.
I did go to the state planning commission's hearing at the county, I think I was the only elected official there. I don't think there were more than twenty-five people there, some planning people, some curious people, you know, people from different planning boards around the state, it was a very disappointing turnout. But, you know, again, they just keep talking about carrots, it has no teeth. You know, I mean, I brought up the disconnects in my comments about the fact that the DEP will not allow the RTM away to grow at all as far as sewer capacity and yet are foisting through the DCA fifteen or eighteen hundred co-units on them and they have no capacity. And, you know, the guy said, well, there's not much you can do about it. I said, yeah, you could recommend cutting both their budgets until they get along, you know. But that's, you know. And I didn't even think about, you know, our conflict attorney is the attorney for our township. I just feel like I'm a damn old stuff. But, yeah, I got really snarky, I mean, everybody else was like, oh, just protect the environment. And I'm like, okay, let's protect the environment and you got to do like this whole co-thing, but well, going to the safe and I'm just, you know, frustrated over the fact that nothing is, nothing is, I mean, that's a plan, it is a state plan from two thousand one.
Yeah.
And there's no changes, so I can tell.
It is a very, it has not worked out to be a substantive change or a process that's going to result in a lot of.
But, but people don't have their dander up like they used to, being called like urban something, which we already have been called the urban fringe or something like that with part of township. And, you know, twenty years ago, we were all out with pitchforks for that. I was like, it's got no teeth, it's got no cloud, nobody cares, you promise it's carrots and they're crap because we're so tiny. Right, the carrots go to the big cities as they always do and we get the peelings, so.
Not worth it.
It's a baby carrot.
It's not, yeah, no, peelings, it's not worth anything worrying about, I don't think.
Alright. On another note, we have a consistency review to do for council.
Madam Chair, if I could just really quickly, I just want to let everybody know, I know we're in a bit of a transition without Eileen here and it's upsetting that we lost the other potential, but I can keep dealing with the agenda. I can help with minutes and we can transcribe from the audio that's being taken right now. Unfortunately, I've had to do this for other towns before because these secretaries are few and far between, at least good ones, that's for sure. So we might want to think about, and we could talk offline, but if anybody has any ideas, we could reach out to the attorneys for the open applications, make sure they know what's going on, I don't know where her emails are being forwarded to, so things.
They're not, Eileen's emails are being bounced back with a message saying, do not, do not use this email address, call Borough Hall.
Okay. Alright, so whatever I can do to kind of help until we're there, I just want to let you know. And if it would help to reach out, I know we have a list of open applications, if it would help to reach out to the attorneys, let them know what's going on, I'm happy to do that. So whatever you need, just let me know.
Thank you, I appreciate that, it's very helpful. In terms of this consistency review, Carla did tell me we have an ex, we could do it at the next meeting and still be in time to do it for their public hearing.
Are we talking about the survey?
We do have it ready, I did forward the resolution, we do have everyone here, Beth here, so it's really up to, up to you, Madam Chair, as to how you want to proceed.
Did everybody, I did, as Carla said, I've been trying to catch the things and I don't, and send them out, hopefully they all go out before.
I'm sorry, when you say the consistency review, do you mean the state plan?
No, the ordinance that council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, okay.
It's a zoning ordinance, a brewery and.
It was part of, part of the big ordinance.
Pulled some stuff from the big ordinance, the ordinance we did last year. I did believe, I hope I sent it round and everybody, everybody received it. I sent round what we could.
Did everybody have a chance to look at it?
Did everybody feel any look, Carla did tell me today that we would be able to do it at the next meeting if people felt more comfortable and still be within the time for them to do it before their public hearing. So if people don't feel comfortable going over it.
The only question I would ask, is there any, is this coming out of the stuff that we put back to council?
Yes.
Correct.
Has anything changed from in here from what we've recommended to council?
We literally pulled, literally pulled out the brewery, distillery portion of that ordinance and created its own ordinance.
For, in the HR?
In the HR.
The HR.
Okay.
So yes, it's, it's as we wrote it, just a small part of what we wrote last year. So in terms of that, it shouldn't, it should be in a reeling, there's nothing changed except it's just smaller than we were originally going to through last year, that's all.
Absolutely, the master plan from two thousand twenty-two, the land use element recommended modernizing some permitted uses. We recommended incorporating additional uses that would make the borough more attractive, such as restaurants and entertainment generally. I can, if you give me a minute, I can confirm the language for the brewery or the distillery specifically. But those changes that we had worked on previously were intended to facilitate the recommendations in the master plan, given that this is one piece of that, I do recommend that the board find that this is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Right, it was section seven on the bigger.
Yeah, I mean, all it seems is that we're adding under permitted, what they put in here was permitted principal use, adding brewery and then adding under accessory use, the stuff that we put in about pop-up events and those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
I'm good, but I don't know if anyone else, I mean, I looked at it before, that was my only question, was that we had it deviated from what we had seen.
No, it's literally, I wouldn't say cherry picked, but kind of like, yeah, this is our wording, I didn't change that, we just didn't include everything. And Carla did write as a resolution, so we could do it and I could send, could send that on to them. Have ever been through, does anybody else on the board feel strongly about this and read it or not get a chance to read it and feel strongly they don't want to vote on this tonight? Anybody online, Dennis, Melissa?
Ready to vote, I'm good.
Okay, okay, I hear that.
Alright, then I'm going to make the motion that we find, hold on, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh nine not substantially inconsistent with the borough's master plan and did not have any, and we do not have any recommendations.
I'll second.
Alright, Dennis seconded that. So that was Dashna and Dennis, it showed.
Wait, so, do you need to address the agenda?
Oh.
First called on, I make a motion to amend the agenda.
It's actually there, we just kind of hopped around, yeah, we hopped around a little bit. It's under nine.
I see configured spark, cross wash. There was a couple amendments.
Yeah, I don't know.
Might be the old one, Karen.
You've got it on yours, we don't have it on ours.
Oh, you did do that and I didn't get to.
It's okay, listen, we're all doing our best right now, we're, we're a man down.
He tried to say, we changed this twice in twenty-four hours, so I apologize.
We just thought this was going to be boring.
It's going to be, it's going to go down in history, it's not going to be the fastest one.
So, so I'm going, I'm going, I am going to withdraw my motion.
Right.
And well, then we can do the amendment.
Well, I made the motion to amend.
Alright.
It's going to second it.
All in favor?
I.
Now, I move that we find, hold on, I'm going to make sure I get this right, that ordinance twenty twenty-five oh nine not substantially inconsistent with the borough's master plan, that we do not have any recommendations to the governing body.
I'll second.
Okay, Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
I've stayed.
Chairman Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dashna? Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, we'll get that sent over to council, ready for your public hearing. Thank you. Right, let's, oh, professional reports, we've, we still didn't come out professional reports.
I'm done.
You don't have anything. Jade, do you have anything other than what's on the agenda?
Nothing for me.
Perfect, then let's move on to.
We need to ask Karen.
Carla, do you have a report to make?
No, it's okay, just my comment about whatever I can do to help.
Okay, thank you, much appreciated. Then let's move on to what is now item nine, approval of the minutes for February twenty five. Okay, thank you. Much appreciated. Um, then let's move on to what is now item nine, approval of the minutes for February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, regular week. And I did issue those. Um, Eileen was nice enough to write those for us before she left. Um, any questions, comments, amendments, changes that need to be made to those that were sent around by anybody? Good. Can we get the motion? Thank you.
Okay, who made the motion? Jeff?
No.
No, no. Sarah's second.
Okay. Alright, everyone is eligible, uh, but for Mr. Echol. So Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Chair Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show?
Us.
Vice Chair Dashna?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, new item ten is resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, which as is already on the agenda, is gonna be finalized and adopted at the next meeting. That's tabled for the next meeting, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, if they've forgotten notice. Um, item eleven, here we go, right, let's get to business. Item eleven. Completeness Spark Car Wash L L C, application twenty twenty-five oh two, block forty-nine, lots five and six. Um, application for preliminary, preliminary and final major site plan with bulk variances. Um, engineer Clerico has done a wonderfully detailed report for us, um, on this completeness. Can you summarize that for us, please, Bob?
Um, well, yeah, basically the, you know, the report outlines some elements of, of the application. There's some unique elements in that that involves. Essentially one principal property and, uh, extending improvements extend on to it adjoining property. Um, that's the lot six is the principal property and lot five is the, uh, very large, uh, property that includes the mattress store. Uh, it also includes parking. It was previously leased to McDonald's. Also from the information I have in there, was somewhat limited. Includes part of the T D bank and the access driver in from, uh, Rainbow Avenue on the T B bank. So a lot of the, the commentary here is really to have the app, we gather up and present a plan. Right, right now they're just have a plan to develop the lot six, tear down the red cramped car wash install, uh, a, I'm sorry. Tear down the red cramped restaurant, install a car wash with exterior, uh, stations, uh, and have various access drive, or driveways and elements that extend. Over onto lot five, indicating just from a procedural standpoint, they have to define if they're looking to merge those lots or if they're looking to, uh, adjust the boundary line. Or if they're looking to modify the plan, so they'll all be improvements end up on lot six, uh, which is where the restaurant currently is. Um, they're common owners at the moment, um, that may not be the case going forward, but they, at the moment, they're same owner owns both properties. Uh, and again, on lot five, there's a lot of encumbrances from things that have happened in the past. And our checklist requires if the lot's part of the application, they gotta show us everything that's going on over the lot. So this will be an opportunity. For them, for us, for the borough to have a, just a clear document, so exactly what's on that property. What elements are left over for this applicant to use as part of this application? They certainly have an abundance of parking, uh, on there, but, um, again, there's no accounting of exactly who owns what, where, kind of thing. So that's a, a lot of what's going on here. Uh, there was, I saw two other variants that I didn't get a chance to talk to Beth about it, but. They're seeking a, a variance to put a kiosk in the front, the building, which is an accessory structure. We don't permit accessory structures in the front yard. But there's also, if you look deep carefully at the plan, uh, there's actually two, what I think are two additional, uh, accessory structures, which are, um, ordering stations that have. Canopies over, I'd be there to qualify the structure or something. Um, so I'm pointing out that they have to amend the application to seek additional variances relief for that. Uh, and the rest of it is just sort of the meat, the data stuff of what's here and what's not here. Uh, somebody may qualify for waivers. Uh, they didn't request it, so I didn't offer that as a recommendation. Um, the applicants certainly, uh, and they contacted, my office actually wanted, uh, meet, meeting, asked, they have some questions. So they're gonna kinda go through some of this stuff. I believe they set that up for Friday. Um, and there was two items on here. One, they were asking me for the waiver from doing an environmental impact statement. I didn't feel comfortable recommending it that way to be granted. I said, you probably should deny it until unless you get some recommendation for environmental permission. They don't need one. Uh, they have submitted a traffic report. They have submitted a stormwater report, but there could very well be other elements of the site the environmental commission might be interested in. Don't know. Uh, so I'm recommending you deny that, uh, waiver, uh, and there was one item they would need a partial waiver on. They didn't ask for it, but it's one we typically grant. Um, they have all the documentation on the site in the area they're developing, but some of the other historical data.
Oh, no.
Is that, are we okay?
Yeah.
I think so.
We, um, extend out, um, two hundred feet beyond the site and I recommend you waive the two hundred foot aspect of it. Uh, so it's all, it's all outlined in the report. If you're, if you're in agreement, um, then your action with the outline on page three of the report, which is to, um. Uh, grant a partial waiver on item eight, item eighteen, um, grant a temporary waiver on item sixteen, which is. If they're asking for preliminary, final, one of the checklist items for finals for them to submit an ASB plan. The presumption is they don't apply for final until they build anything. So obviously they're applying upfront, which they're entitled to do. Um, that item has to be, would need to be waived. And again, recommending I M T that it denied waiver for the I S and then the last thing I just saw all the items, if you want me to read them all, but. Uh, in the letter, all the items that would be incomplete.
Okay, I just, um, ask, uh, Melissa Swingle, who's chair of the environmental commission, are you guys gonna be reviewing this at your meeting, next meeting?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Good, yeah, I certainly know since I was odd that way, I don't feel comfortable, um, waving an environmental. Statement on that property with, particularly with the use that's proposed with the use of the water, um, maybe that's something we need to. First, I think we're somewhere to, I don't insist on. Any, uh, comments from anybody else? I must admit, I, I feel like I need more assistance. I think I'm beneath it.
Is there anybody there on behalf of the applicant?
I'm not, no.
No.
Okay.
Well, I just had that one question earlier was that when, I think a year or two ago, when McDonald's came before, so when they put those turner lanes in. I thought part of that was that they could exit through the back. Is when they were doing the turnaround and, um, pick up stuff, that. Part of that traffic flow, I thought they were set in, in that applicant, I thought said that they could go out the back and.
Well, getting to the deep, when we get a complete application to a D J review, we get it, something like that. My recollection is that their plan shows that there is a connection out the back.
Through the car wash, will still have that.
Well, they're not working, that's what it's like.
Yeah, let's not talk about the application itself too much. Uh, we'll wait till it comes actually before us.
I think Mark's comment was just that we might have to pull the resolution for that to make, make sure that there's nothing in that related to that lot. Or the access to that lot, wasn't that my?
Well, they, they could submit some backup documentation with the application. Uh, I, I haven't reviewed that in due course. I don't.
Mm-hmm.
But the particulars of this, I can't tell you that. I'm just talking about the checklist requirements.
How does anybody else feel about the completeness?
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's complete. I mean, it's not complete.
Well, I'm confused about exactly what they're doing and where, so I feel that needs to be addressed before we can do it complete, right? Like Bob's comment about, does, do we need to provide, do they need to do a subdivision here? Do we need to identify exactly where they are better before we can move forward? I think is the.
I quite want to say about that lot issue.
Yes. Because, and the reason I raise that is because we got into issues at the very last minute with Liberty Village with similar things about ownership and plot and lots.
Well, I, I outlined what I thought was.
Forward to that.
Four possibilities, um, they need to pick which one they're doing. I think, I think, from looking at the plan, it's not exactly clear. I think they're attempting to define another lease area on lot five that would be used for the car wash.
Hmm.
It doesn't appear from the plan that it's exclusive, so there, there's a, there's a lot of minutia detail here that.
Right.
Has, has to be.
So it, it, I mean, my, my thought at this point is. That it, it feels like it's incomplete. It feels like the applicants already reached out to Bob's office for a meeting on Friday. Issues in his review letter could be discussed. These other issues, you know, the access question that Mark raised and some of these other questions can be raised with them and then they can. You know, and I think resubmit with everything they need. We can then, if necessary, you know. Then that one deemed them complete. I don't, I don't even know if we need to, um, grant the waivers at this point. We can handle the waivers at the time of completeness determination.
Yeah, let's do it all at once. We're, we're trying to simplify and keep all action at one meeting. So at this point. I think the motion, if everybody agrees, would be to deem the application incomplete, uh, stop the clock. They'll have their meeting with Bob on Friday and then, uh. They can resubmit everything that's addressed in Bob's letter and hopefully be deemed completed the next, you know, whenever they resubmit.
In, indication that they're actually buying the site? Or is it gonna be another land lease, like T G I F N?
Well, there's the owners listed here and they're listed as the applicant. I don't know if there was any representation that they were somehow purchasing this, um. So, so, again, I didn't get as the weeds are, but I don't, I didn't, nothing jumped off the page and they were, you know, they're just the applicant.
Okay.
I'll move to deem the application incomplete.
Sarah's second.
Who was the second?
Sarah.
Thank you. Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Chair Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dashna?
Yes.
And Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Since there was a request for a waiver, just clarified that your, your motion included denial of that request.
Yeah, we're not.
We're not gonna grant any waivers until, until, and if they, and if they want the waivers, then no.
Thank you. Alright, so will, um, will Bob's meeting, Carla with them on Friday suffice for passing on the information? Or do we need to contact them separately also? To let them know?
I will reach out, let them know it was deemed incomplete. I suspect they probably expected that since no one's here and since Bob had his letter and they have a meeting Friday. Uh, but I could reach out to council and just let them know that's what happened and, uh, let them know we'd like to see everything come in one fell, uh, swoop of resubmission and then we'll deal with it at that point.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Alright, let's get on to some other business. Item twelve. Completeness public hearing over the MS LLC application twenty twenty-five oh one, lot forty-five, lot twenty-two. Mayor Carol and Councilwoman Fasaro are accused because of the retarding. So we're like, you know, next night happens later. And.
Before they leave?
Uh-huh.
Um. There's an issue that the board might want to amend their agenda to address because in the interim, before you have a board secretary. We have plans on another matter that needs signatures of a board secretary.
Right.
So I think we talked about the possibility of having a board member act as the recording secretary or interim recording secretary. So the plan can be signed and that's why.
You don't want to sleep with more women and we could be the secretaries?
No.
No. It says board member.
Because that's a pinnacle evidence. Let me just bring Carla up to date on that. Carla, that is, is a set of plans here from another application that normally would be signed by Bob, myself and, um, this secretary. As we do not have an active secretary on the books right now. Um. Um, Joe was suggesting that we could nominate somebody else from the board to be a second signature for those, so that we can get them signed tonight for them.
Yep, yeah, the M L U L provides for a recording secretary that's a board member as well. So you could certainly make a motion in a second and. Um, appoint someone to act in that capacity. Um, not a bad idea to have anyway, um, in instances where things need to be done quickly. Um, and of course, until we actually have a actual board secretary.
They have to be a full voting member because we only have here in the room to sign anything, full voting, board members are. Mr. Dashm, Mr. Giffen, Ms. Fasaro, myself, um, Mr. Hane and Mr. Echol are alternates one and two. So if it has to be a full voting member, we're really low here.
Um. So it's, it's, I'll leave it up to the board if you wanna wait, um.
Well, I.
Or, or in the alternative, we could appoint someone that may not be there. And I don't know if, uh, Mr. Grunberg wanted to take the plans with him tonight, but someone could come in and sign tomorrow and they could be picked up. I mean, you know, it's really operational from all of your perspectives.
Chris Snitzer loved the box here tonight.
Ms. Swingle, you're in your car. Can you come in?
I'm in, I'm in a parking lot until eight, until spouse is over, but.
Okay, are you waiting for one of your kids to get out of the?
There is my, you can't do it?
I mean, I could. I'm just, I mean, I, whatever. I'm vice chair.
It's almost eight to clock it out. You used to clock it, Swingle, and, and do that?
Yeah, I could do that. I could swing past. It'll take me, I'm in three bridges, so it'll take me about twenty, twenty-five minutes to get to Borough Hall.
You're not many cases. You'll be here for a while. Let's go. It is Mr. Grunberg.
Alright, so do I need to, um, call for an amendment to the agenda to make that vote or can we just?
The door. Yep.
Right, then I have a. A motion to amend the agenda that added an item to make Mr. As Mr.
Ms. Recording Secretary.
Temporary recording secretary.
Alright, so move. Sarah's second.
Can we do that all in favor for that?
Yep, all in favor?
Yes.
I made a motion to name, uh, Melissa Swingle as a temporary recording secretary. Sarah's second. Sorry, Melissa.
Accept.
That's what you get from being a person.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Chair Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle, you have to say yes. Mr. Show?
Us.
Vice Chair Dashna?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Yes.
Alright.
And, and thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Well, no, because, because Dennis is down here and Mike is in here and.
Alright, we'll definitely move on to what is now item twelve, uh, come twelve, in Reno, it says six on twelve. I added it in the wrong spot, thirteen.
Thirteen.
Catch up in the end, um, which as the student, you may know, is actually completeness of side public hearing from the MS LLC application twenty twenty-five oh one. Because we need to first address the completeness for the additional de-variance that you now require.
Yeah, want me to give a little spiel and then?
Give us as spiel as you can, so we can all get out here before midnight.
So funny thing happened after being to complete at the last meeting that we were here. Um, we filed this application and there'll be testimony that my client filed this application based upon the zoning map that was online. That this was in the C B district. The application was prepared. Based upon the zoning map that was online for the borough, that it was, the property was in the C B district. It was deemed complete with all of our understanding that the property was in the C B district. And lo and behold, when Ms. McManus's office did their planning review, it's now in the T C district. Which required us to revise our application to request additional relief of the D one variance relief and D four variance relief. Um, Mr. Clerico provided the updated completeness review. We, uh. Made submissions in response to that completeness review. And I'm happy to report that he indicated in his most recent report, uh, recommendation that the application be deemed complete. Because you already granted the one waiver, uh, dealing with the site easement in the state D O T right away, which we can't even provide you. So, um, I, I think it's a simple motion to deem the application complete based upon Mr. Clerico's most recent correspondence.
Before we move ahead, I wanna make for the record, um, Carla Kozinski has recused herself on this. And Mrs. Sodilo was now our attorney for this matter.
Yes, I will take over. Thank you, uh, ma'am chair, and I will take over the duties that Carol was handling.
Thank you. So I've been heard from the applicant on the completeness item. Um, Bob, was your amended report, was that what Mr. Grunberg stated? That's what he said?
That's what the letter says.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, um, discussion for the board on whether they're doing this complete for the additional de-variance item. Anybody have any thoughts? Yay, nay, or indifferent? Okay, so, um.
I move that we deem it complete.
There we go. Thank you. True, I'm paying.
Do we, yeah, okay, roll call.
Roll call.
Can I apologize on names? I'm still just.
Okay.
So, um, we're going to Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show?
Us.
Mr. Schle, Schleger?
Is that?
Oh, he's there, sorry. Mr. Dashna?
Uh, here, yes.
And Mr. Echol?
Uh, yes.
Actually, the wedding, the table on that?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Hane.
Mr. Hane, will you call us in?
Because we have, uh, it's.
Mr. Schleger is listening, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh, just, yeah.
Mr. Hane. Yes, no, no, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Please, please call me out and. Still learning who's everyone, who, who's who.
You don't have a.
Okay.
Which people are.
Right, I'll thank you back. Right, oh, thank you, thanks. So with no further ado, we'll move on to the public hearing. For Nova Domus LLC application twenty twenty five oh one lot forty five lot two for use variants and to construct two family dwelling.
Thank you, I provided proof of service of the uh, proof of service and of the notice of hearing and publication of the notice of hearing. And as a board attorney, confirm that there's jurisdiction of the procedure.
Yes, uh, my chair, I reviewed the, the uh, public notice in the packet and it all is acceptable and for his jurisdiction of this application.
Perfect, thank you.
So thank you, this is our application to construct a two-family uh duplex on an existing vacant lot that is located in the TC zone and it's a unique piece of property because um, it's right on Route twelve, although it's called Sixth Parker Avenue for some reason. It's really on State Highway Route twelve. And it consists of point two-three acres, so it's actually already an undersized lot of twenty thousand square feet. Um, there's a pre-existing lot with fifty-seven point three-two feet where one hundred feet is required. Property is currently vacant except for existing foundation, um, which remains from a prior residential structure. So we're proposing a, a new two thousand two hundred and eighty-two square foot two-family dwelling on the premises using the existing driveway opening from Route twelve um, that is there. Um, it'll be served by public water and public sewer. And we do need various relief, uh, which one is a D one variance to allow a two-family dwelling, uh, a single-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling were permitted in the CB zone, now they're not. Um, the uh, construction of the proposed two-family dwelling will be in the TC zone. We add additional relief of D four FAR variance. I'm not gonna give you those numbers because we recalculated them and they're actually a little bit better than that, but we still require a D four variance and Mr. Nussler will provide the details on that. And various um, pre-existing naming and proposed uh, C variances. Rather than me go on and on, why don't we get to the testimony? I have three witnesses this evening, Sarah Maldonado, who is the principal of Nova Domus LLC, the applicant. Um, Chris Nussler will be our engineer and planner and what I plan to do is present him first for engineering, then present Mr. Marion after him for architecture and then go back to Mr. Nussler to finish on planning. But I'll qualify in the beginning both as engineer and planner. And with that, if you want, everybody sworn at once or one at a time, whatever you prefer.
I, I defer to the chair.
We often do all at once so that it's done, we know it's done and then everybody's cleared and then they can, because often we have. So yeah, can I, if you can make sure that you're uh, visible on the screen there, please, um, anybody giving testimony?
Everybody stand behind me.
Yeah, you're good.
You're perfect, thank you.
Alright, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I guess uh, when we go through each witness, we'll have them state their name for the record.
That's fine. So first of all, we'll have Ms. Maldonado to not sit there next to me.
And then counsel?
So um, if you can please state your name?
Sarah Maldonado.
And what is your position with Nova Domus LLC?
I'm an owner together with my father, Samuel Maldonado.
And what type of company is Nova Domus LLC?
We work with real estate, real estate.
What's been your experience on what you've been doing that business?
Um, we've just been doing it a couple of years here in Flemington. We have done um, a couple in rehab projects, taking properties that were not in livable condition, for example, getting them up and being able to sell them again. So this would be our first new build.
Okay, so this is the first vacant piece of property that you've actually purchased? So when did you actually purchase the property?
Last year.
And when you did your due diligence, did you take a look at the zoning map online uh, to make sure that you were going to be able to do what you could do?
Yes, since we only plan to do residential, we um looked online, found the zoning map and found that this property fit to be able to do um, well, it was zoned for single-family and duplex. We knew that it might require variance for the duplex.
For, for some of the side yard relief?
Correct.
And that's what we originally applied for, correct?
Yeah.
Um, and, but we found out that it's actually been rezoned after, well, before you purchased it, but um, in two thousand twenty-three to the TC district, correct?
Correct.
So um, what is your intention with respect to the property? How, what do you want to do in terms of the bill?
So we, um, our intention is to build a duplex to make more uh, housing for the Flemington area. Um, we are looking to either rent or sell, of course, depending on what um, offers we're able to, to achieve there, but.
So you haven't made up your mind yet whether it would be a, a rental property or um, just selling yet?
Not completely, no.
That's all the questions I have. I mean, we can, uh, I'll probably be reaching back, but that's all the questions I have basically.
Okay. Well, then we usually go to our professionals. Questions for this witness, please? You have any?
I have no questions.
I, I don't.
Alright, then I go to members of the board. Anybody on the board have um, questions for this witness, please? Anybody?
Okay.
I do, I have a question around, I am. Um, you said that the, to check the applicable zoning, when you bought the property, you just checked the online map. Did you contact the zoning office at all here in town?
No.
Okay, alright, that was just a question. Thanks.
Great.
No, no, I don't, I like it.
Anybody online?
The other question?
Yeah, well, ma'am chair, I'm just gonna ask procedurally, you know, this, the board, I don't know, some boards hold all public questions to the end, some ask each witness as they come up. I'm not sure how this board proceeds.
Right, yeah, we often, and because often if it's gonna go over several weeks, we ask the witnesses uh, questions for each witness as we go, just in case if we are pushing to the next one.
We don't.
This might be quicker, but yeah, we usually, with that as a usual procedure, but so, yeah.
No, absolutely.
And then do you forget to check online? Because I'm doing it till everybody's watching it around just me, but I don't see any other attorneys and I don't see anybody with a raised hand. If anybody online has a question for this witness? Please feel free to raise your hand now. I don't see anything. Okay? That's what I was, that was what I meant, I meant members, oh, members of the public in this room? You know, okay, seeing none, we will.
No, I'm sorry, it's just, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
Uh, when did you see about the property again? It's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, okay, thank you.
Mr. Nussler? Who are you affiliated with?
It's Christopher Nussler, N U S S E R with uh, French and Perlo Associates.
Does he give the board the benefit of your qualifications as an engineer and planner?
Certainly, uh, I am a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. Those licenses are both in good standing. Um, I graduated from Rutgers University in two thousand and six with a bachelor's of science in civil engineering and have been practicing uh, in land development um, since. So, that's almost twenty years. I've appeared before over seventy boards in the state of New Jersey, including this one, as I've been accepted as both a expert in planning and engineering.
Uh, for Mr. Nussler is both an expert in both of engineering and planning.
Sorry, just, you didn't say it. What's your qualification in planning? You mentioned your qualifications in engineering, just so we have it on the record.
Um, I've again, a license, I did not go to school for planning, I did not have my A I C P, I am a um, planner by um, testing, if you will, my engineering license, uh, but um, I have been practicing uh, planning and then providing testimony on quite a number of applications over the past uh, licensed for fifteen years now.
Okay, you're a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey and your planning license is in good standing?
It is. I just, I, you hadn't said anything, I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so does anybody on the board have any other queries about um, this um, the test, this? This, oh gosh. Professional uh, witness um, uh, credentials as to that and being an engineer and a planner, I wish we got. Okay, seeing none? Do you mean acceptable to the board, thank you?
Thank you. So um, Mr. Nussler, why don't you orient the board to the site and tell them what our plan is here? If you're gonna present a wit, an exhibit that has uh, been presented to the board, let's uh, identify.
Yes. You need to share screen uh, on that.
Yes, I will.
He wants to get it here first.
Well, I was gonna give you. We do have a
Physical picture.
Physical copy of it. Can I see this? I know, I'll mark the physical copy so I can leave it behind. And I'll wait. Email them to someone, um, the.
I don't know, we usually mark every day, so we go through the current exhibits of them, the, in their application with like exhibit A, the general application, everything included in the application package, is that correct, or?
Usually, right, so that's, that's A one is usually the uh, application, A two is usually proof of notices. Um, and then this would be A three if we're we're following what we usually do.
And that's funny. Yes, that works for me and I appreciate you letting me know. And that mark is A one.
And then, and then if you really want, we also do oftentimes, if you want to handle this now, is we also do the reports from professionals, it's P one, you know, whatever, but we can handle those, maybe when we get to them.
Okay. So A three is titled site plan exhibit, prepared by my office and dated today. And A, A three is um, the site plan showing the site features with the aerial photographs underlying underneath it.
Under my DVD.
Okay.
It's gonna say, we, on the screen or we need it on the share screen?
Yes.
Is this um, is this, I know it's called something that's already been provided?
No.
The fact that this is new today, okay.
Can, can you uh, enable me to share?
Yeah.
So use the carrot here next to share. And there is below. Multiple.
We need to let him specifically, I'll be able to join now.
Nope, I'm good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some of the people at home, maybe they're gonna be watching. Our board, I just have to say it's
That's all, that's up there. Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to make it.
I think that's as full screen as you can make it, I think.
Take a look.
Looks pretty good.
Okay. Um. Alright then, so I'm going to point on the screen. And, oh, that's gonna be, use it up too. Wait, wait, it's been a while, I don't use much Zoom anymore. But it is the little pointer.
I see.
Is that a little better?
Yeah, yeah.
A little laggy, so I'll leave too quick.
Just kind of, kind of.
Back and, uh, back and over that. It's been a little bit. Okay, so again, the property is Sixth Parker Avenue, which is also, as Mr. Grunberg noted, uh, State Highway Route twelve. We are located right at the entry uh, to Main Street Circle, as you can see, kind of across the street. Maybe it'll be just slightly east of Brown. Hold on, this little floor is gonna travel a little bit. Oh my, if I don't move it back. Um, it's known as Lot Lot forty-five, Lot twenty-two. And it is a ten thousand one hundred and thirty-five square foot lot uh, with fifty-seven point uh, three-two feet of width. It's fifty-seven point three-three feet of frontage. There's a little bit of an angle there. Uh, the property has historically contains a single-family dwelling on it, uh, though it is not in the historic district or south of that. Um, there are remains of the old garage foundation on the east central portion of the site. As I'm indicating about here. As well as the driveway out onto Parker exists when the state uh, redid the circle. When they did it, but I don't remember the year, was it like two thousand five, two thousand six? No, it's over, right now.
Long time ago, because I have never seen construction, I mean, no, you're right, I think twenty years ago.
Yeah, something, something around there. Um, you know, they bumped the curb line out where it used to extend consistent with the neighboring properties and now comes out, there's almost no shoulder in front of this property as you're entering into the circle and when they did that work, they extended the driveway out to, to the highway, so it exists really only within the right of way. Um, so, well, otherwise the, the property is maintained along with some mature trees on it, which I know we'll discuss. Um, I, you know, did look at the trees, I actually stopped by today uh, on the property and quite a number of them are um, white pines along the edges that are um, one is dead, very dead, uh, noted on the plan as such. Um, a couple others are diseased and dying, losing their leaves, the needles are turning brown and they're falling off. Um, but really these are older white pines and so the branches don't start until you're twenty-five feet. Uh, um, not in great condition. There are couple really nice trees on the property. I think the nicest one is right at the, at the front of the property, the eastern, front eastern corner, that tree is being left alone. Thankfully, it is a very nice deciduous tree, as well as some other trees around the property. Surrounding the property, we have the Whiteford Office to the east which fronts on the circle really in South Main Street. To the south, we have a commercial property that I believe most recently was the bridal shop. Um, and is currently vacant to my knowledge. To the south of that is more residential properties. Uh, to our west, we have a number of residential properties. Uh, the immediate neighbor is a single-family, the next one over is a two-family house. Uh, and then single-family again. Across Route twelve, we have the auto repair garage, which is kind of just out of frame here as well as more uh, residential properties along Brown. Uh, as we said, the property or the project proposes to construct a two-family dwelling on the property using that existing access um, off of Route twelve. I'm gonna repeat a bit of uh, what Mr. Grunberg said, so I'll be as quick as I can about it, uh, so not belabor too many points. Uh, the property again is located in the TC transition commercial zones. As we noted, it was located in the CB community business zone until September twenty twenty-three, when your zoning was updated. Um, the properties that are continuous on the same block here on Parker will all rezoned concurrently, so the Whiteford Building, uh, these buildings to the commercial building to the south, the residential building to the south. This at least it's vacant over here, piece of properties, you, you come around. It's the Worthville Properties, I believe, is what extends all the way over here, as well as the residential properties, we're all rezoned together. Uh, on the north side of Route twelve, these properties remain in the CB zone. The TC zone permits offices, medical office, childcare, indoor and outdoor recreation, theaters, higher education and training, community buildings, club facilities, animal hospital, funeral homes, research facilities, health and fitness facilities, residential uses existing as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance, which may be expanded or enlarged without need for a use variance.
Uh, Chris, are we gonna just deal with engineering now and then come back on the planning?
Well, just, yes, this isn't planning per se, so much as this is just, this is the zoning as it exists. Um, there are a number of conditional uses that are permitted, including a cannabis retailer, retail sales and service on one acre lots, multi-family residential on one acre lots, which is really a mixed use because it requires a um, commercial component on their contractor use like industrial and repair facilities. Um, the, so as proposed probably can read the uh, what's in front of me, but it's a bit small, so I have to open my plan here. Uh, so as proposed, we have a two thousand two hundred and eighty-two square foot footprint uh, dwelling, two-family dwelling, uh, that is separated. Is that technically vertically? I guess, I'm sure the arch- the architectural speed benefit is one unit on one floor, um the second unit is on the second floor. Um the. The. The property is actually located, and Mr. Clark makes a comment about it. Uh the building's located kind of skewing the property, it's not centered within the space. It is, you know, slightly towards the Whiteford Facility, and that's because. At the time when we had prepared these plans initially, and we thought this was in the CB District. Um the side yard setbacks were seven feet to. The commercial and fifteen feet from a residential property, and so. Um this was made to comply with that. I don't think we would have. Any issue with Mr. Clarko's suggestion that we maybe center it up on the property to even up the. The setbacks. That said, there are a number of variances related to the proposed dwelling. Um specifically both side yards. Because instead of a seven and fifteen foot side yard, we now have a fifteen foot to the commercial and thirty five foot to the residential side. So that's fifty total feet of setbacks on a fifty seven point three three foot lot. Just the fact, not planning. The lot is undersized where twenty thousand square feet is. Required, um this lot again is. Slightly more than half that. It requires, as Mr. Gruber said earlier, a one hundred foot lot width where we are currently fifty seven point three two feet. The floor area ratio.
Before that, th- those are all existing conditions that we can't change, correct?
The lot area and width, that's correct. And the, I mean, the side yards are what they are, right, those are. The standards in the zone and the fact that we have a seven foot wide building envelope. Is a, it's just a a fact of the zone ordinance.
It because based upon the zoning ordinance, you would have to build a structure that was. Seven feet wide in the middle of the structure, of the lot, correct?
You could slightly skew, but yes, it would be seven, seven feet wide. To comply. Uh the floor area ratio, there's, the TC Zone has a requirement of zero point two five. We know on the plan, it's zero point four five over um when we calculated it. We've used the floor area. Times two floors, but really there's a section over top of the garage in front where there is not. Um there is a second floor there, it's just one story in the in front of it, so. Correcting for the fact that the. Um second floor doesn't exist there, including garage within the gross floor area. Total book gross floor area would be. Three thousand six hundred and eighty one square feet, which is a floor area ratio of point. Three, six, three. So slightly less than. Kind of meeting in the middle, if you will, of what the standard is and what was proposed. Uh or shown to be proposed, so the standard that's required is point two five, we thought it was point four five, but it's actually point three six three. That's correct. So the, the project is. Laid out. I think fairly typically for a two family house. We're, we are using, reusing the entrance from the state highways, I said. Um we do have a letter of no interest from the DOT allowing us to reuse that driveway and not acquiring. A new access permit, so using that entrance in to the site, providing. Two parking spaces, one for each unit within a garage, space within the building, a space in front of each garage. And a third space located. To the west on there for guests or just having an extra space, it's not a location where. Uh you can park within the shoulder on Route twelve going a little bit west of the site, but it'd be nice to have. Um the additional space on the, on the property here. Uh and we are able to do that while staying at forty one point six percent on impervious coverage, so we are still under the. Impervious coverage that is allowed. Uh so in total, the parking, we are required to have four spaces. And we are providing five, so we are in access on on that. Um behind these parking spaces, we do provide twenty four foot. Isle space typical for any parking, where you would be able to uh back up. And the site, the spaces themselves are ten by twenty. Where our RSIS would only require nine by eighteen, so they are a little bit bigger. Uh than a typical stall. And that is in part a function of the fact that the garage is ten feet wide and. And you are parking into the garage, so you don't want to have it to be just eighteen. As, as it relates to the site distance uh from the driveway leaving. Um here, as Mr. Troutman noted. The site distance is entirely within the state highway right of way. Uh this is a solid double yellow line across from the driveway. Which means. You can't cross that, so no left in, no left out, you can only right turn in, right turn out from that driveway. Really, the only site distance that you're looking for then is to the left, and as this. We noted earlier, you're you're pushed forwards out into the highway, really, when you get to that point and you look, you're looking. Almost straight down that lane, so you have uh excellent site distance in that that left direction. The. Tree removal on here, it's not moving on this sheet, but.
The new sheet or is this?
This is the, this is the submitted set.
Okay. Which page number is of the submit set that you're fancy?
Yes. Uh sheet one. Of the plan set that was submitted and dated last revised March seventh. So we have an incident in here showing the the trees that are proposed to be removed. Uh there are a total of eight trees shown on here. Along the eastern boundary here, these are all the white pines. The first one is a rather large tree. Then the branches start fairly high up on it. As you, as you come down, the second tree is fairly diseased. The third one is completely dead and has no bark on it. And then you have three more white pines, this one is. The fourth one down is clearly. Has a lot of needle blight on it, it's very brown, uh and then again, you have two more as you go down. This one here in the middle. And the center of the site, it's noted as a ten inch tree. Ten inches more towards the base and it splits off into being a a double, uh and that's like a. A spruce tree that actually is browsed or limbed or something along those lines, but again, we're eight feet up and there's like a little tuck on top of it. Of a tree, so again, it's not. In great shape. Uh and then finally, we have a tree that is right by the driveway entrance. It's actually, it's a very large tree, but it is a a fairly nice tree, but I will say when I pulled into the driveway, it did. Scraped the side of my truck, so um it is, it's being removed because it's, it's growing into that. Into that space.
So. Most of those trees are are either dead or dying, is that fair to say? Or a good portion of them are?
Yes, and you know, one of the things that we looked at here was the, with Mr. Cleaver's suggestion that we center the building. We're pulling further away from this eastern property line. And, you know, I I looked and I said, oh, well, this is a twenty one inch tree, the most northernly of it. Can we, can we keep that tree, because we're gonna be moving further away. Uh from it, and you know, maybe there's an opportunity there to save the tree. And I, just to be honest, when I went out there and I looked at it. It's, it's not, it's close to the house, it's a a dying white or or white pine. Um that quite frankly is more of a nuisance to anything built on a house or even the neighboring property. Quite frankly, the neighbor on the other side, because it is fairly tall tree. Um and is certainly greater than fifty seven feet tall. Uh would land on their property if it went the other way, um and that it'd be. As nice as it might be as a thought to try and leave it. I I don't, I don't think it's viable to do so.
Probably should have done before I started talking. Sorry, I got a back problem, so in case you know, I have a muscle spasm, that'll make me. No, I'm good, thanks, it's just.
I'll mark this as a four.
Yes.
It is a packet of several drawings or just one?
It is a packet of, it's two sheets with four total photos, these photos were taken by me and they were taken today.
Okay.
Give you some better. Context on the site. The ones that I have up here. It's, yeah, the pictures are one, two, three, four, sort of. It's just set up like that. Um so first picture is from approximately the driveway area. Looking towards the Whiteford Building, you can see the Whiteford Building here. Here are the the planes that we're speaking about. Uh you can see here's the very dead one that is. Well bleached, there is an existing hedge that runs along the property line. During the summer months, that is fairly full as it leaves out, obviously, in its current state. It is a bit more translucent. Here's a picture of looking to the rear of the property, you can see some more of the. Pine trees here where, again, it's losing limbs and they're all. Fairly high up, you can see the remains of the old garage here. Uh here's a picture, again, a little bit further back in the site from in front of the old garage looking. Again, towards the Whiteford Building, and you can see this tree here is not dead yet. Um but clearly is not green like that tree and is very sickly. Um so. Well, it's not dead, it is, well, on its way to it. Um and the final picture is looking. Looking north from the garage back towards the, towards Route twelve. You can see the auto repair across here, there's a dead tree. Again, this second tree, and you can see it's fairly bare and it has a lot of. A lot of dead needles on it, and then this was that tree that I was speaking about, that I thought maybe we could save. Again, it's limbed up pretty high. It's. It's only a matter of time before it looks like it's it's neighbors here, and then finally, you can see. Uh here's the smooth tree in the middle. That again is your about ten feet up before there's any branches on it, it's gotten a bit scraggly. And then you can kind of see the tree by the entrance over here, which is deciduous, and it's a. Yeah, right, right next to the driveway, but just to give you some some better context from within the site. And about the trees, I know there's a comment from the shade tree commission about the trees and. Um you know, we we took it seriously. When it comes to the trees, it's just, you know, we look at it and it's not. Just trying to assess the viability both now and in the future of them and. It just. They're, they're old and they're, they're on their way. To, to being, being hazardous there already.
And go on to the reports or some more site?
Just a little bit more site stuff and then we can go to the reports. Uh so from a grading perspective. And we go to sheet three of the plan set. Uh the site right now drains probably twelve to the rear of the property and kind of goes. It leaves. Kind of the southwest corner of the property and then crosses on to, if I go to. Sheet two. Comes through, it actually aims for, there's an inlet in the back of. Behind the parking lot, just kind of out in space over here. And it all kind of directs towards and then would run past. Into the, that vacant area beyond. Um needs, proposal for degrading is to really maintain those existing drainage patterns, except for the fact that there's a building in the way. And we are breaking the, um we're breaking the drainage patterns around it, so water is being directed around the buildings. And then continuing on in its um current path. In a, we did some simple modeling on the site. And the people in mind are project, it does not require any storm management improvements, it is below the fifteen percent. Uh threshold is even of the ordinance and involves. An addition of about thirty nine hundred square feet of impervious to the site. That results in a. One hundred year future storm as the D E P now has it defined, which is a about twelve. Uh inch rainfall event. As a increase of zero point one five cubic feet per second, which is about a gallon. Every, every second. Um it's, I think, a de minimis amount of additional stormwater, this is a very. Um it's a small site, we can't generate too much water to begin with, and the increase is. Uh instantly fairly small, even in such a large rain event. Uh as far as utility connections, we are reusing or. Connecting new, depending on the the demands to the existing utility connections, we do have. Uh the weather from the borough on the former system on that we have availability for sewer and water for. The um for the site, we do also have electricity. We got a G C P N L letter, will serve letter saying that they can provide. The site, no response from the gas company as of yet. Um as far as proposed landscaping, you can see uh the sheet, we do have one trigger maple. Uh near the driveway, further away so that it does not crash my truck. And I go into it uh or anybody else's, for that matter. Um the, the site will meet all the S E D standards during construction. Um we also submitted with the application a traffic impact statement. Uh just a couple things to note from within there. Uh one, as I mentioned before, we do have a letter of no interest from the NJ D O T. Uh we have a de minimis. Change in peak hour trips over what the pre-existing use was, which was single family and even over it being vacant. Over a single family, it's, it's more or less trips. Um in the peak hour. We did a comparison in there to other approved or permitted uses within the. The zone, and it's an increase of anywhere from two to ten peak hour trips over what is proposed. The two family that is proposed. Um the type of traffic uh for this as opposed to. Uh for this as opposed to um a building use, a commercial use is slightly different, this would be. People's personal vehicles. And, you know, the trash trucks don't come onto the site, you bring cans out to the street. Where you're gonna have larger delivery vehicles, you know, maybe a box truck if you had an office on this property, you know, the garbage truck coming on. Um and we also noted within there that there's no change in the level of service to. Route twelve as a result of the developments.
So um I went through the letters and I think we can. Address Mister Clerco's correspondence of March twenty first, two thousand twenty five on. Page floor uh four eight two, he asked for basement floor elevation, that's something that we can provide, correct?
Yes.
If I may just just stop because I I believe the board we marked the uh the report, the work course. Exhibit, so since we're talking about the Van Cleef, we'll mark that as, was it P one that did one?
He's gonna have two reports, I read from the original, oh, did you just do this? Which this is report number two, do we, do we need to mark both or is this one surprise?
You would just mark that one because it's an update.
The one day we had the original, um do you remember the date, the first one?
Yeah, I have it here, um first one is January thirty eight, right?
So that would be P one and then P two could be the March twenty first, which is.
And that's what Coward does, I mean, you know.
I'd like to be consistent, you know, don't want to change anything.
Because you you refer to something on the borough water and sewer, is it something different from what I included in my report? You said you had an approval?
No, we've we've got the letter from uh Remington and Vernic that says that there's a um. Capacity and that they want some additional things, it's not like a formal approval. You, the Remi, the report that you referred to.
Okay.
But I don't think there's, there's nothing there that we can't include, right? I was gonna go through it right now.
Well.
That was fine.
Yeah, apart from the water and sewer, they could not, but those.
As we go through them. Okay. I think in my orders, I will do um. The shade tree commission as P B four.
Right.
The environmental commission as P B five.
Right.
And um last but not least, or planner, actually it wouldn't be last, but more planner is P B six.
Right.
And then traffic as P B seven.
Seven, yes. And I was wondering, you say you've got a letter of no interest from the D O T, did you submit that with any kind of, do you want to submit that?
That was submitted as part of the record.
Okay, so that's an original set, okay, good, we got that, now we captured that.
Referring to P B two, which is Mister Clerco's um March. Twenty first report, I believe, on page four. We asked for basement four elevations on A two, which we can do.
That's correct.
Page five um on A sixty asks for. That the board may want to consider an arrangement of the side yards. Uh let's talk a little bit more about that. The the way we originally prepared his plan was based upon the C B zoning district why, which is why we shifted more to the right. But if if the board, it was inclined to have us. Centered with with structure a little bit more to even out the two variances, we could do that.
Yes, yeah, we could easily center it in there, I think there are some benefits. We said it kind of keeps us away from that eastern property line um and the the hedge that is there, we could. There was a portion of it that we were proposing to um. Have to remove for some grading, but if we move the building over, it would be twelve point six five feet. Each side. If we were to center the building, uh we'd be able to maintain us. That hedges it runs down the uh the property line.
So we're proposing that at twelve point six. Uh five side yard setbacks on both sides.
Yes. So if if we were to center the building on the, within the property. Instead of, we have it shaded to the east right now towards the white building, if we were to just center it up so that it has even setbacks on both sides. It would be twelve point six five feet. So we'd move about fourish feet to the west uh centering the building.
And that allows us to preserve those hedges uh along the eastern property line, correct?
Right.
And then you can add the two variances that were required.
Um it not really because. It's decided, the setbacks are. Again, it's fifteen feet from the commercial, thirty five feet from the residential, so actually there is. A greater setback required from the residential. This trying to stay away from playing at least.
Did you say that the ordered setbacks were not on the premise of residence, it's gonna be whole lot of slot?
That's about what I was about, I was about to say that, yes. Um this is a residential use flooding up to another residential use, so I think that, you know, centering it is, there's no detriment to to do with that.
I think you addressed B one, how where water will drain and any adverse effects on any other properties, if you want to elaborate that on. At all on page five?
Um. I don't know, I don't, I don't think we need to, I think there there's a comment in here about how the roof figures run and maybe I'm getting.
I think that's B two, we're gonna talk about on um. Page five about stormwater management suggestion about.
Excuse me, do you mind me interrupting with questions? Is your plan was indicated, southern is water runs off to the east. I was asking for more clarity on the plan, is exactly where the water from the lot is going.
Okay, yeah, and we could certainly provide the clarity on it to make sure where.
Is any of the water going off to these?
Um my understanding of it is that it's running across down and across the lot. Um to the to the out of that southwest corner.
And your plan for proposing the roof leaders of giving to do what?
To just have them agree, my concern here is, I I know you put a comment here about providing some stormwater management. You know, it it's a small amount, but my biggest concern is I've dug enough test pits. Around here only to find the water goes nowhere. That I'm gonna, you know, we're gonna build a bathtub in the backyard and it's not gonna serve. To mitigate anything.
Cause we're not gonna be able to document the water actually runs off this lot, that it's not flat in the back.
Yeah, the water does run off the back now. Um.
And you're gonna provide sufficient grading to show that that actually happens?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I have no concerns about the water leaving the site.
In terms of stormwater management, which is where I was going with the request for porous pavement. Or um what what are your thoughts or expert opinion with respect to whether porous tape in it upfront would be a good idea?
So, yeah, right, and and that's kind of the. The issue here is. The porous pavement is in, would be in this front area, which is on the high side of the lot. Maintain my concern. That there is limited permeability. Especially in the the rock shroud. Um just generally in the area, and so we can put it in porous pavement, it'd be going down into a stone layer. And the the natural direction for it to go is south towards the house. And now we're taking this water, putting it. Under the pavement and it doesn't have anywhere to go into the ground and now it's coming out the house and now we're just putting it. Into there and, you know, I think there was a comment in here as well. Uh with this part of four with the roof leaders is, you know, are they gonna have a foundation drain, there'll be a foundation drain, a sub pump for the water that gets. You know, against the foundation because they're using, they have storage areas proposed within the basement and so. Now we're running more water. My concern would be we'd be running out water into that system and just pumping it out of a a sub pump, it would be sending more water in into the basement.
Yeah, given given the minimal amount of stormwater that is actually involved in here. It is a better for it to flow across land where it's in the direction that it's going now than to than to try and do infiltration and. Can't can't actually happen.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, this is a minor project, it doesn't require summer management improvements in here. Um it is again under the ordinances threshold where you exceed fifty percent and you need to do summer management measures. Uh for within there, you know, for that, it isn't a very small amount. Um this isn't the spice factory, which hopefully I have a sign plan.
She's behind you, ready to sign.
I was, I was just about to say, normally I would wait for your testimony to end and I'll suggest we have a break at nine. Even as you wanted to sign those things, would it, can I propose that we suggest that we have a break right now? And come back to your testimony after the break, and we'll do the sign in and then we can come back.
Can I, can I finish, can I finish my thought and then we take a break? So my my point about the spice factory, again, this is, that's a larger site, you're got several acres. And so when you're talking about exceeding the fifty percent, you're talking about. Stormwater on a a larger scale, you're doing it on, you know, it's more area, more impervious, this is a very small site, it's ten thousand square foot site. It's a very de minimis increase in stormwater and it doesn't. Run in a negative way to any building or property where it would impact somebody. But to add a stormwater management measure on here, my concern is that we'd be creating an impact on here. I appreciate the the comment and the desire to. Not create issues and and to mitigate storm where where we can, even if it is a minor project and. You know, if we can make it better, let's make it better, my concern is that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't make it better, that there's not, you know, there's, there's not a way to get rid of that water.
Okay.
All right, so we'll take a break for five ten five minutes. And we'll come back. At eight. There we go, I would actually like to do a roll call just to check everyone's back for the record.
Absolutely, uh Madam Chair, um uh roll call please, Mister Campion?
Here.
Miss Giffen?
Yeah.
Miss Weitzman?
Here.
Miss Swingle?
Here.
Mister Mister Schro. Uh Mister Dashna?
Here.
Mister Echo?
Here.
And Mister Hey?
Here.
Everyone is back.
Thank you.
But still, we know we're done with stormwater, I'd like to move on to page six, B three. Uh there's a comment about um sidewalk due to that rear door, we're not proposing the sidewalk. Um if the board wants us to have a sidewalk, we can have a sidewalk, but it's a residential property, there's not really a reason to have a sidewalk.
If the architect testifies whether that's a building code requirement or not.
Okay, we'll deal with it that way. If it's a building code requirement, we'll provide a sidewalk, but if we do provide a sidewalk, are we still underneath the impervious?
We would be, it's it's another one and a half percent maybe. So we're still wrong with the fifty percent, we're at forty one point six and I think it brings itself to shorter forty three.
So it's not an inferior, if it's a building code requirement, we'll provide a sidewalk.
Okay.
Um B four, I don't know what it is, but we'll do it.
You agreed to, what's that?
Uh showing the location of the roof leaders.
Yeah, we're showing you a little.
And means the methods for the foundation drain for the basement, so again, sub pump, they're charging out.
And we will do that. Uh C one, the shade tree commission, uh their request number two for screening.
We'll get to. Do you wanna just wait till we get to the shade tree letter?
That's what I'm gonna deal with right now.
Oh, we're gonna go to the shade tree.
Yeah, that's what C doing this.
So going to P B four. Correct. The shade tree commission um again discusses the removal of trees. Requesting uh replanting. Of an equal number of replacement trees. Or a uh contribution in kinds and noting you're okay with the species of silver. Um silver maple, sugar maple, sorry, silver maple, they probably would have said no, sugar maple, yes.
But why don't we show what we originally proposed and what we can do?
So what we originally proposed here, again, we're looking at sheet three of the plan set, is the one tree along the street in the front here. There is space in the rear of the property where, again, if you look back at A four in those pictures, there are some pine trees and. It is a little bit shaded within that space, but there is room to plant some additional trees in there, we feel we can plant three trees within that space. It's not the total of um seven that is being requested, it would be a total of four. Um for the seven trees. Again, I think. You know, even in in their count of seven trees, they're discounting the dead tree within that, and I think we have a number, as you can see. Disease trees within there, I think it's a. Um you know, there'd be a better quality of tree certainly than white pines that are just gonna lose limbs and.
So so we're proposing four trees, a replacement of four trees instead of the separate that are requested, correct?
Correct.
Um and the environmental commission is referred to in the Clerco's report on C three. And they. Have a request. They uh they talked about the impervious coverage with the criminal papers, which we already discussed, number one. Landscaping and trees, they've deferred to the shapes or three fingers then. Um number three, lighting, we haven't really discussed lighting, but.
The lighting, there's no sight lighting proposed, again, it's it's too fairly residential, so it would be. Lights over the entryways, you know, lights, light over the garage. Um but no, no sight lighting, no, nothing bright, just typical residential lighting.
And then with the fixtures that we do, will be dark sky approved lighting fixtures?
Uh on the house, I I gotta say. The they will be typical resident, I don't like, I wouldn't, I don't know that they make. That's in caps, dark sky approved residential lights, I don't think that they exist in in that matter. Um and if they do, it's it's gonna be something, let's say, something that is shielded, something that is. Yeah, we're facing something that would be. Meet the intent of dark sky, but without necessarily the official uh stamp and seal of approval.
So they'll be shielded and we'll provide those details to satisfaction of the board professionals.
So the the color of them, you know, warmer color, twenty seven hundred Kelvin, something in that range, certainly. I think that's the dark sky approved standard is.
Number, number four on their report is, they, I I I don't get this one, I gotta be honest with you, saying that we can't connect to natural gas. Um it's something, it's a utility and um. You know, I I think we're seeing. Property owners to only heat and their. Buy their property by electric, just doesn't make sense, I don't know if that's been uh adopted, but. Um it it it's something that I think that is really inappropriate for a board to say you can't connect to. Natural gas when it's a utility that's available within municipality. I don't know if you want to discuss that at all, but uh uh we would, we would like the opportunity to leave that open. So that if we want to connect to natural gas, we connect to natural gas. Um and moving on from there. The last thing on Mister Clerco's report is on page seven, outside agency approvals, we will get all those for your satisfactions. I think that's it from Mister Clerco's report. Moving on to Mister Troutman's report. Um page two, number one, he asks whether we are going to require a highway occupancy permit?
Yeah, I think again to your point on what we, what you said by outside agencies. Mister Clerco's, are there any necessary D O T permits, whether it's for utilities or occupancy permit to. Uh replace the driveway in kind, we receive those permits.
Hey Steve?
Yeah.
I I can comment on that further, um I did a little more research on that, I found a. A part in the N J D O T access code that says. A lot or site owner does not need a new access. A lot or site owner does not need a new access permit to perform maintenance or in-kind replacement. So, um, I don't know why the DOT put that in their letter, they were just probably covering themselves, but. I don't see an occupancy permit needed to replace that sidewalk in that pavement.
Appreciate that. Um, number two, peak, uh, the peak hours for this use, he notes is, uh. Two trips during weekday morning. Evening and weekend peak hours, it's a peak of two days, correct? Yes. So that, that's not a lot of trips.
No, that was.
Okay, number three.
Uh, I, I think he's, sorry, he's also noting that, uh, the rates that we used in. Our report are slightly more conservative and slightly higher than, than what those. Than, than those numbers.
Right. Um, number three. I, I think there's just a recognition of the level of service for A to the right and L, at worst case, level of C for. The left, and I don't know if Mr. Troutman wants to, to comment on that any further.
Well, I just wanted to comment on the testimony, um, the, the double yellow center line. What that refers to in title thirty nine is, it just means it's a no passing zone. It, it doesn't prohibit people from turning left. So you, you're allowed to turn out of your driveway across the double yellow center line and you're allowed to turn into your driveway. Across the double yellow center line, so people will be able to make any turn they want at this driveway, just like they can at all the houses to the west.
I, I think it's, it's unfair to say though that, that functionally, people aren't gonna wanna make that left-hand turn. Uh, unless it's all clear and there's adequate sight distance for them to make.
Well, I would say there is adequate sight distance, but it's just a. It's a bit of a difficult spot to make a left.
And they probably wouldn't want to do that, correct?
Yeah, they, they would have the option to go around the circle if they wanted to go west.
Um, number four, confirmation that the site easements not necessary. And five, testimony regarding the likelihood of two-way traffic during the peak hours, if there's only two trips. During that peak hour, the likelihood of a conflict is pretty low, correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we, we have it as like one and a quarter trip. In a, in the evening, it's one and a quarter trip coming in and, uh, three quarters of a trip leaving the site, so, you know, one, one in and one out in. Across an hour, so I, I think there's a, in, in a peak, in the evening peak hour, so I think it's a. Not a very high likelihood that we would have, um, a, a conflict because of that.
So from there, we go to Ms. McManus's report. Um, which is March twenty third, two thousand twenty five, and from an engineering perspective, I think she. Uh, asked them four point two additional windy opening and garage more in line. It might be an architectural thing, but can we do that?
Uh, we, we could, so the, the request would be to extend kind of the. The entryway forwards, um, depending on how we extend it forwards, whether it's fully enclosed or. You know, just the, the entry roof over top and I will certainly lead that to the, to the impact and to discussion of the board, their thoughts. Um, it may increase the floor area a little bit, um, but as it is, we went. With the calculation, it is down a little bit, but we, we can, it wouldn't increase the impervious coverage, it would just be replacing the sidewalk that's there and making it slightly more.
That's something we could work with on that. Uh, four point three lighting details, I think we testified to that. And four point four landscaping, unless there's anything you'd wanna discuss about, I think we talked about that.
No, I, I think it's, uh, generally been addressed. I'm in favor of adding the additional trees to the, to the rear of the property as discussed. I'm in favor of. Uh, of, uh, it's not plantings, but also providing some fencing, so there's additional privacy. Uh, should the board choose to approve the application, um, particularly along the, the adjacent Wicker office. Property line, just so there's visibility, whether it's, whether it's additional plant, sorry, whether it's additional evergreen trees or. And or solid fence, just to provide that privacy.
We'd be happy to work with you on that, but fencing would be appropriate in my client's district.
You clarify, you said the hedge is there, is on your, was that hedge installed by Wicker? Was that part of their plan or is that something you're calling a priority?
It's not clear.
But it's on your.
It kind of straddles the line and ends up on this property.
So if you were to put a fence in.
It would be inside of the hedge.
Inside, so the hedge would be on that white side of the fence.
They're maintaining that hedge. I honestly think it was intended to be their hedge, but it's not. Clear whether they just missed.
Well, White Hart was the previous owner of this.
So, um, you want to clarify, you, you, you agree to put fences, where are the fences going off?
The, the, when, this is going all the way back, and I'm not testifying, but, um, the. When the Wicker project happened a while back and it was two individual residential homes that were then. Joined to become single lots, they're two lots, they were two houses, single family houses that were joined together with some. With a fair amount of testimony in front of this board about making sure that they still looked like two separate houses, if they ever wanted to be two separate houses. I think there was also testimony that part of that plan was the screening from a now commercial property. To what was a residential use next to it, so it's, it seems logical that there. That that hedge road was in fact part of their site plan, um, because it, it would make sense to have. Requirement of the screening from a parking lot of a, of a commercial, now commercial property to what was then still a house.
Yeah.
Um, before it was demolished, so it's probably. On, it's, it's probably on their site plan. This is what I would imagine.
Yeah, and what we can do is, cause you are looking for a little bit of clarity, uh, on the greeting anyway, so we can, we'll clarify and we'll just go and we'll double check to make sure. That we're, we're, we're giving a width to the. The way that it was surveyed, I just wanna make sure that it's, it's correct to, to where it is, so we can, we can go and reconfirm the location.
And we can put a fence along a line without disturbing the hedge road. Unless we can work out with Wicker that, that they, uh, they put their edges on our property. But, uh, uh, we, we can provide that appropriate screen. Right?
Yeah.
Um. I think that's it for your report from an engineering perspective. And that's all the testimony you have from this, you know, surround the engineering field of planning later.
Okay, thank you. Um, so then we go to, um. I'm like my professional, I, I know we've made them as, as the testimony has gone along, but it's a good period for any other questions. Um, this, as an engineer, right, just for the engineering part.
None for me.
No, I have some comments later, but no more questions.
Okay, Jay, did you raise everything you wanted to raise?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and, um. Um, okay, so.
Maybe just one question. Have you made any, um.
I'm sorry, you waved it.
I said a lot about last year.
No, no, I'll say the good.
No, you.
Hides, you know, the. Have you done any? We know from other applications, this area has a very high groundwater table. Have you done any testing to establish the depth of groundwater table?
We have not.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, um, I haven't had that one, let's go to numbers of the board with questions for this witness, as is engineering capacity, please. Testimony, anybody?
Yeah, the only, I mean, we kind of asked us before if I could, just the, so the intention is, you're gonna. The intention for the runoff, the wa, the stormwater runoff in the structure is. Leaders over surface to the rear utilizing the existing. Uh, catch basin that is on the south, to the southwest of, of, of the property, so it's, it's on the next property to the south, right?
It's not necessarily, it's not sort of utilizing it.
Yeah.
Um. It, it appears as though it runs to it.
Okay.
If it, if it does, it would go in, if otherwise it would just bypass, but it's going in the same, letting the water go in the same manner that it does now.
Right, right, okay, and to make sure, and, and the intention is the routing of any downspouts and gutters to. To, to, to do that and not necessarily to point out towards twelve or towards the wider property.
No, we wouldn't, I, I, I'd love to be able to send it up to twelve, but it's uphill.
Right.
And the drain is a little bit to the east and I think Jay will tell you, trying to connect and Bob. I'm sure can tell you as well, trying to connect into the stage drainage system with water that isn't currently going there. Is pushing a boulder uphill.
No, and, and that, and that's why I'm asking the question, so the intent is to. Is the water, the stormwater runoff, what minimal it will be, because this is a relatively small structure, I understand, is, is to kind of. Flow as it's been flowing towards the south and west and where it goes, it goes and, okay, correct, um, alright. The other, this is really silly little question on the, the page one of the plans, um, there is. But one of the insights, it's colored, it talks about the zoning map, there's a five hundred foot radius on there, what is the reason why, what was that for? I understand the two hundred foot, is there a reason why there's five hundred marked out on that?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I've just, I, I'm just, it was, I am, my, you know. Full disclosure, my property is just north of that five hundred line and I wanted to make sure there was some re, why, reason why it wasn't gonna be a problem for me over there. Uh, in terms of like conflicts or anything like that. I'm definitely past two hundred feet, it was just a, it was just a question of.
Yeah.
Reason, okay. Just, just making sure, alright, thanks.
Yeah, that's something, I was getting Alex, I mean, we usually do, anybody have a conflict of interest, I'll answer them. Maybe we'll do it before the discussion or something. Um, uh, any of the board members online have any questions to this witness, Dennis, Melissa, or mine?
It's like Hannah does.
Oh, Hannah does, oh, yeah, well, yeah, I love that.
Hi, sorry, just, uh, two quick questions, um, so what, will you be installing a sun pump, is that, or was that just kind of?
Yeah, there would be a sun pump in the basement.
Okay, and that will lead towards what you were just talking to about with Jeff?
Right, it'll just, it would, it would just start just like the roofing would move out onto a slash block and I would follow the, it just degraded fast.
Okay, but there definitely will be a sub pump?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then my other question is, is it, um, and I, I think this is a question for you. Is there, is the, is it gonna be AC units? Oops, sorry.
Yes, and the AC units are shown there in the, uh, stop sharing, so I'll share. Again, really quickly. So if you look on. Sheet one. You can move it a little at the rear of the house. It's not gonna let me pad that. Um, you can see at the rear of the house.
Is it those, yeah, that's what I, okay, oh, I see now, I totally missed that, sorry, okay. Great, that was my question.
Sorry, Derek. Yeah, do have, actually, one, if you do center the house, so you're like twelve point six, I guess basically on each side, you know, the driveway would. Stay the same or, but would you, would that actually knock off four inches?
It would, it would, well, you're gonna take four feet, right, so the driveway would be, you're gonna, the driveway location. Right, on the plan here, where it comes off from group twelve would stay. But the, the main part of the driveway, the spaces and the backup area, that's all gonna move over with, right, it's all coming with it, four feet over. So you're gonna cuss, yeah, four feet of impervious, so, yeah.
Uh, just something, something to note, you know.
And answer Jeff's question, but five hundred foot is a checklist requirement. They shall not obtain a change of the part of the key. Really?
Yeah.
I, I missed that, we updated the checklist.
We, we were trying to give you a.
No, I just didn't realize.
We're following the rules.
You didn't realize, there you go.
Uh, it looks like Dennis has a question too.
Alright, let's let Dennis go, I'll go last.
Okay, one, Dan.
I just wanted to follow up on Hannah's question, so given the sun pump. The amount of water then is gonna be more than if the building was not there. Uh, I know the impervious changes also, but if you have a basement, there's gonna be more water. Coming out of, um, that property, would you agree?
No, no, because it's. When you're, when you're looking at it, you're modeling, there is additional runoff that would come, as I testified to earlier, right, it's that. Zero point one five additional cubic feet per second in a. All inch, twenty-four hour storm, that future hundred year storm. But the water that falls is the water that falls, so if there's, there's water. That falls and it, and it comes along the foundation and it goes down into the drains and gets into the sun pump and is ejected, that's water that's already part of that calculation. It's just water that, you know, came off the driveway and goes under the house. And then it gets ejected out as opposed to, um, what would that would be? You know, what if it directly discharges off the.
But, but having a basement, we all know the water table's high. And having a basement that some pump, if the house wasn't there, you're not gonna have the water that is already from underground, but. By going down, you're gonna be bringing water up that would not have come up if the property wasn't built, correct?
Well. Yes, but the water, so. Are, are we talking about runoff, stormwater runoff? Round, just about groundwater in general.
As Bob said, and you said the, the water table in that area is quite high, so if you go into a basement, you necessarily are basically. Collecting into the basement, the water that would have been sitting and would have just sat there and not moved. But now you have to clear it out because it's, you're clearing it out from the basement.
And, and that's. That's less a, that's not really contributing to. Stormwater runoff necessarily, right, would there be additional water that comes, or gets discharged, yes, it's, it's groundwater that's gonna get pulled out. It's not necessarily tied to, I mean, yes, it is tied to a storm, because that was gonna look ready to the ground, but it's not.
My main concern with that, to go to Dan's point, is the discharge for that sum. If it's right, because the house is, uh, the proposed dwelling is quite close to the property land with the adjacent house. If that basically discharges right onto the sentiment's lot, it's gonna cause a large little pond in that lot like that, I think that's a concern of that. That some will necessarily be producing a spout of water that comes outside the house.
A, a very fair comment, um, and I think we had agreed already to comply with. Mr. Clerco's letter, we had a note about showing details of, we knew, number. B four. Um, correct? Yeah, showing the means and methods for the foundation drain, which would be how it gets discharged, so. You know, on any revised plan, we would show where that gets discharged, how it gets discharged, make sure it's stable and make sure, to your point that. You know. The applicant certainly doesn't, well, you know, wanna be a bad neighbor, nobody, nobody says that to do that, so you wanna make sure it goes in the right spot and. You know, we would have your engineer to review it.
Let me interject, but my comment is gonna be answered, um, we don't have specific data here on ground conditions, but we do know. Very extensive information on the adjoining property, and we're dealing with a high ground. And this is a use variance, if this was a commercial building, we wouldn't have a basement. And then all likely, we have a lot of adjoining project, have a lot of residential use with no basements.
Right.
Um, you, once you put a basement in, you gotta keep it dry, uh, if you're in a high groundwater table, you're basically pumping water out of it. If, if we have a high groundwater here, which hasn't been established factually, but.
I mean, so, can I just interject really quickly? But when you say the adjacent project, which are you speaking about?
The one, what was it called?
Fourth fault.
The back.
Oh, closer down to the. Next to the, the.
Sort of that large black lot.
It's next to the, the, oh, yeah.
And as somebody who lives in a house that has an extremely high walls, tables have been actually built on the wall. I know our stuff is going constantly, so it's very important, Alice is now connected to the, to it luckily, actually, the new project for the road. Previously, it created a, a marsh outside where the, some.
If, I'm only raising, I mean, it would be dealt with under a building, right, I'm only raising the question because it's associated with the use.
Mm-hmm.
That's before, so if it was a commercial bill, then we wouldn't be talking about it.
So if I, if I tend very quickly, rough, rough, old back of the napkin math. Finish floors at a one eighty four fifty, say the basement floor elevation is a, you know, ten feet. Below, it's at a one. Nine, nine feet down. It's a one, one seventy five fifty, the. The bottom of the stormwater basin in the middle of the circle is a one seventy-six, it's basically the same elevation, so. That is not like the one in the middle of the two O two circle where it just constantly fills up with water and then floods everybody's cars out parked in the top rate. This one stays dry, um, the state would have had to get, just like everybody else, two feet from groundwater separation. So. You know, yes, down the road a little bit, it does get lower in elevation in that direction. I understand they have an issue, we obviously. Haven't done testing, but you know, right here on the circle, we don't have the same issue, so. That's not me giving a high vote of confidence that we won't hit groundwater, we won't hit groundwater. But I think, you know, this is, the circle's a whole lot closer than. The Woodsville property on the street.
Right, the circle is not trying to discharge next to a, a residence.
I'm sorry, what?
The circle water is not trying to discharge onto a residence, probably feet away, that's.
No, but I think the point is, I think the point is, is that if the, the, the basin in the circle is generally dry. Then the depth of the basement, which is about the same depth, which should be generally dry, I think we're using, we're gonna qualify this because no one's done any test.
You're assuming where the water table is based on the circle being dry, the circle basin being dry.
Generally, I only raised the question, so it's tied to the use. We're gonna have a usable basement, and this is not, this is a basement that we're gonna hear from the architect, but this is a basement. That they're proposing for use, um, as part of the structure, so.
Right. And so. To the, the point about the discharge, certainly the discharge would be routed in a way where it wasn't, if you look at. Give myself a disservice.
There's some discharge could, could cause a.
The, the neighboring houses, the neighboring houses are further forwards. Right, and. Right, and so we'll make sure that we're not discharging directly onto his property, that we're discharging down and like I said, in a safe manner that. Doesn't create. Um, those issues.
Okay.
You also got to hear, but this is not a site. So, you know, we're only dealing with these things, we're dealing with a use issue.
The notion that a commercial. Building can't have a basement.
I didn't say it can, I said it wouldn't necessarily need one.
It wouldn't necessarily need one, but that doesn't mean that because this is a residential structure that it's, the, the need, the. Uh, ha- the ability to have a basement is tied to the use. I mean, your, your.
What was suggested that you wanna, that you wanna basement, so you wanna dry, so we need to know where the water is being pumped to, that's not, that's what it was.
What the statement was, was that the board can, uh. Make a distinction between this use. And a commercial use, because a commercial use doesn't have a basement. And therefore, this is an issue of concern that can be addressed. But it's not, because a commercial use can have a basement too, it's not tied to the.
Right, well, we still have the problem with whichever use it was, but it's going to be used.
No, because, because, because they could have easily proposed, they could be asking for relief for residential use and not propose a basement. There's nothing, there's only, there's only the residential side proven standards that require them to have a basement, they're choosing to put a basement in there. But, but as Bob just said, this is not a cyclone application where the question about use is, is, is about. Re- uh, uh, a, a two-family residential development in this particular spot, as opposed to, uh. Anything else, I mean. And, and it, and it doesn't have. And it doesn't have any. Uh, again, a commercial use can have a basement, a residential use can have a basement, it doesn't. Uh, it doesn't factor into our proposed use of having a residential use with a basement.
Well, I, I'll just jump in. I, I agree with you and disagree with you. I agree that in general terms, residential versus commercial, you can't separate a base, you can have a base in either one. So that alone is, you know, in a general term is not a factor, but what the board is dealing with in this application. Is the specific application that is being asked for, and that is part of what the use is being asked for, which does include a basement. And I think that's what the, the board member was mentioning too, is if this application didn't have, wasn't, didn't include a basement. It wouldn't be including that as part of the discussion, as part of the use variance, but that is what's being presented, so that's why it's. For this specific site, not in the general term of, it's I agree, if you're in a general term, commercial versus residential. You can't say a basement is, is a, a term of effect.
Yeah, I think, I think we're both, I think we're saying the same.
For our point to add to that, I feel, the other best supporters, but. I'm, I'm thinking about the adjacent landowner and thinking about what impacts this could have on that, and so that's why I'm asking.
And, and I think, and again, I think that's a more than fair concern to have. And if I was that neighbor, I'd be very happy that you would have that concern, um, and, and that's where, as I said. Before, I think Mr. Clarko's letter kind of covers that already on where that discharge ends up going to make sure that it's not going. You know, directly onto that person's lot, that it goes in a safe manner, that it goes in a stable manner, it doesn't cause plumbing, it doesn't cause erosion issues on. Our property or theirs, and we're more than happy to address that, like I said, I think that's. That's, um. I, I don't think we could ever say that we, we wouldn't.
If we can provide.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think I have one thing I don't know, and I know you've got two hats, but we're addressing you with a hat later, and. For when it's planning, but I have a question about the foundation as been mentioned, and I think it's important. Um, you mentioned that the foundation is existence on the plan, see, it mentions it, and your photographic evidence here shows. It's on like photo two on page one, under your photo packet A four, um. Does, you, your testimony, I remember that you said it was just the remaining foundation of the garage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No remaining foundations of a house. Is that correct?
Not that I observed.
Right. So, I don't know, um, if this, we can do this for discussion, I was propping that in your head, and if it comes up for planning. To me, that's, is that an important point, whether there's an existing?
We're not, we're not suggesting that there's.
I'm just, I'm just prepping, and just, is that, is that my planning question then?
I think it's, I think if it's your, if you're asking in regards to reuse of the foundation that was used for residential use and their proposed. Residential use is part of this application, I do think that's gonna be a planning question.
Well, we'll leave that till then, I'll, I'll ask that.
I, I can indicate to you that we're not seeking to, uh, uh, make an argument that. This is a, an existing foundation that we have the right to rebuild on. And that's not what we're here for, we're here for a use variance, so. The existence of the foundation that, uh, or if not being there, it's not really into play. We can tell you that previously, there was a single family residence there, and I think that's been recognized by board members that there were some. Single family residents there, but we're not seeking, we're seeking, we're here for use.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from the board or anybody before we come away? Anybody in the public? Online, anybody here with questions? No, okay, then let's move on to your next witness then, please.
Call board, Mr. Marion.
Okay.
And spell your last name for director.
Uh, Mark Marion, last name is M A R I O N.
And if you could please give the board the benefit of your qualifications, I would say licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Here, um. At Institute of Architectural Architecture in nineteen two, been registered as an architect in the state of New Jersey. It's eighty-nine, still in good standing. Self-employed as a principal in architecture plus since ninety-one, operating out of our current office in Raridan since nineteen ninety-seven. License is good and current, I offer Mr. Marion as an expert architect.
Any questions from the board?
So we submit architectural, uh, renderings to the board as part of our application. And they're on the screen here, do we have anything to do there or?
No, I mean, no, just this board, which has also been submitted.
It's okay, so the pretty word.
This one, are you even?
This is the same one, as that has been submitted also.
These were in your original submission.
Correct.
A one.
Yes, so if you could just, uh, move forward, I'm over your lights. Can I share this?
And the original submission, what, what page number is this one?
One of one.
One of one, thank you. It's got people fancy the tiny print. Thanks.
Correct. Proposing a two-story, two-family, uh, residence. Uh, this property, it's roughly thirty-two feet wide and seventy-two feet deep. The two units are split, I would say horizontally, there's one on the first floor, there's another unit on the second floor. Two garages in the front. Each entrance is on either side of the garage, so each resident can drive into their garage and get directly into their unit. Via a door next to where the entry door is. Uh, Unit B, which is upstairs. They can get into the hallway there, it'll lead to a stair that goes up along the right side of the building and get some upstairs. To their unit. The lower unit, because of the stairs, a little bit smaller than the upstairs unit, fifteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet, Unit B's sixteen hundred square feet. That's the second floor one. And, uh, each unit is fairly similar, they have all three bedrooms, two baths. There's a kitchen and a very large living room area. And, uh, we are proposing a basement. Uh, which we're gonna split up in, proposing to split up into like three areas, storage areas for the tenants. An A and a B, and then a small mechanical room, which would have. Uh, furnace for the lower unit and hot water heaters. And typically the, these kinds of setup, the furnace for the upstairs unit would be in the attic. And we already talked about the same terms, which is in the back. And, uh, from an apparent point of view, uh, we have a siding and brick at the front, the garages have a low base of siding. Not referred to as a water table, and we played some games with the siding, uh, and the gables switching to a. Vinyl board back, but primarily the, the residence is a vinyl platform siding.
So, um. The one comment I think that we have with respectively architecture is whether additional window opening. Can be achieved, and I'm actually gonna defer to this McMahon, so maybe we can just do it that way. About what, what her thoughts were in terms of, uh, window openings and the garages being more to.
I think we could put a windows in the garage.
Oh, well, hold on, it's not necessarily windows in the garage, it's more of, um, the, on the second story, there are two windows, one window for each unit. And that's really what I need to expand upon, is there not one to do, essentially, you've got the. Uh, along the rear of the building, the rear elevation, there's some double windows, uh, maybe those could be, uh. Added rather than individual windows, or maybe there's two separate windows, um. I'm happy to, to work with you on that if the board's inclined to grant an approval. But I'm looking for, uh, a design that might have a little bit more interest in the front, and I think would just add a little bit more light. Into the unit from the, from Route twelve of Parker Avenue side.
We can double up the windows on the front, easily, so that would be just for the A and B, the second floor unit.
Yeah, it would, yeah, of course.
Would just be for them. Along the sides, the bedrooms could all have double units. Uh, the single windows that you see are in the bathrooms and have the kitchen. I think they were appropriate, uh, when we did, in the bed, in the bedrooms, we have double windows, the living room. Has a triple window next to the.
I think your only concern was with respect.
Yeah, it, it was just two comments in regards to the front facade, one was the, the windows, thank you very much on that. And the other one, I was interested to see if we could talk about a design that had the garage either. At the same elevation or having less of, uh, a difference. Between the garage elevation and the, in the front entry door.
You can pull the front entry door forward, I would, we have to leave enough room for the stairs to not go into the driveway, so. That front, and the, the front porch is also, like, important.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting getting rid of the porch, I do think that's next.
And, so we could pull that forward a little bit, it will increase the F A R a little bit, and, and, uh, as. Engineer testified, uh, it won't change the impervious at all, so.
I mean, it's a, as I said, if the board's inclined to grant the, to grant approval for the use variance, I do think. Some of these, uh, changes to the front facade will be helpful, and it'll improve the building appearance, and I think it would. I think we just improve the building appearance and, and. Not specifically, um, I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to them, but basically I wanna dress up the planning of buildings so that it's a little nicer, it's a little interesting. Uh, more interesting, um, as I said, I decided windows and the garage setback.
We're, we're happy to work with you on that.
Thank you.
That's all I have for architecture. Unless any of the board professionals have any other questions, I think that was all.
You have access to the basement?
Yeah, yeah, access to the basement would be from the side, uh, going, uh, down. Underneath the stairs that are going up to the second U floor unit. Uh, I don't believe the building code requires, uh, a walkway to. Any exterior door, it's pretty, the building code pretty much stops at.
How, how large are, are can you find, let's probably designate it as storage units for, uh, unit A and B.
I did not calculate that, so I do not have those numbers, but I know. Uh, the basement has a similar square footage as the main level.
You have a rather large food panel, that ain't saying that's only gonna serve the, um. You get on the first floor?
Yeah, probably be two hot water heaters in there. I'm anticipating from a drainage point of view, the sun pump will be to the rear of the building to aid in the discharge. Up the rear.
And what's the necessity of having a usable basement for a use like this? Could this house like this be, uh, constructed so to be on a slide? Or crawl space?
Short answer is yes.
What, what would the impact be if?
We'd have to find a. Different spot for the mechanicals, uh, and sometimes in crawl spaces, they can do horizontal. It's even seen it, so if it's possible, we could get an air handler in a crawl space. And hot water heaters are a little bit easier to, uh, move around, we'd have to find some space for hot water heaters.
Is it, is it safe to say that this is a relatively large footprint and you're basically just taking this large space and dividing it up? It, no, as the area storage unit is not necessarily portion to what a, 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 a three-bedroom apartment might be. You're just basically using the space you have available.
We are using it while it's, you have available, yeah, that's correct. I would, uh, venture fifteen hundred, uh, there are about five, six hundred square feet a piece.
The storage units?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the size of the apartment?
Yeah, Unit A is fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, well, the building, yeah.
So that's, it's about a third of the size of the unit, it's pretty good sized storage.
A nice amenity.
But your only access to it is through, how, why would the stairwell be?
It's a, a little bit over three feet.
Three foot one stair?
Yeah. And that would, at minimum would be three, but I think I drew it, two.
Could somebody use it as habitable space?
No.
If I want, if I bought one of these, or I was renting or bought, whatever the scenario here is gonna be. Can I put a pool table down there? Can I put a rec room?
Uh, they're not connected directly to either unit, so it'd be, it's a.
So I have access to it, right?
You, they definitely would have access.
So each tenant would have, it's a common door, so each tenant would have the same key to the common door and then individual keys for their.
Correct. Generally, no, would not be used as habitable space.
Would be prohibited from being used for habitable space?
We truly, we would have a condition if you wanted that.
I mean, from a building code standpoint. Access to windows or anything else, sir?
Yeah, there's no, uh, I mean, it doesn't, a, a basement could be made habitable without any windows, per the building code, New Jersey building code.
But we would agree to a condition, no habitable space in the basement, only for storage and mechanicals.
So for yard, for, I'm, I'm sorry. And for both single-family homes and duplexes, is storage an important, uh, aspect of designing a home now? I'm only gonna comment on the, uh, quantity of storage units that are appearing all over New Jersey. Saying that apparently this would be.
You know, I, I've actually had a conference today on the self-storage application. And the joke was that everybody fills up their garage.
Yes.
Uh, and, and they're parked their cars because there isn't enough storage space. And however much space you have, you always fill up, fair to say.
Yes.
All right, all number questions, Jeff, do you have one?
Just, just real, real quick, I wanna, I'm gonna make sure I'm reading the, the drawing correctly. So access to the basement for, is through.
A side door.
Is through the side that, okay, side, okay, I missed, I missed seeing the side door. I, I, I see how the staircases were stacked and I was concerned about Unit A access, but they're, they're gonna come up near. So is, um, the, the, the stacked staircases, um, Unit B would also have to go outside.
So it'd have to go outside.
To that door on the west side of the property and then, okay, got it, thank you.
You have to go outside, walk, walk through the grass to get to the.
Yep, got it, got you, got her.
Any other board members have questions, uh, that's with this on this testimony?
Yeah, just on the, the drawing that you show, so often, the, the backside, the backyard, I guess, the backside, there's no patio or any things for like.
No, we have not planned for, uh, that, that, because of the bedrooms are in the back, there's no direct access to the rear from either unit, so there's a front door.
And to follow up on that, given the closeness that we are to the fifty percent, wouldn't you have to have some sort of requirement that like, nobody, the, the tenants couldn't add something?
Well, they couldn't, they couldn't add, add something without coming back before.
Right, and just like, I'd expressly, because otherwise then they'll, they'll have, you know.
Well, he testified, that's where the bedrooms are.
Right.
I, well, I guess you could put it back off the bedroom.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thought that there was like a patio or concrete patio.
I'm just thinking of the impervious surface, I don't think it's a percent, we're close already. It's a building twenty-two, I know, but.
Your previous cover is, you guys are at approximately forty-one point six percent, I believe, right? And the maximum permitted is seventy percent in the.
Fifty.
Fifty.
It's seventy.
It's seventy, but if once you go over fifty, you have to do somewhere.
Okay, all right, keep in mind, that's the.
So any, anything that anybody wanted to do up to fifty, they could do, but up to, uh, over fifty, they would need relief from the board. But that's like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a variance, it's, it's a stormwater, magic storm.
But it's not, it's something that can be done under your ordinance without conditioning it in approval.
Well, my only, um, concern to like address it right now is that if they, uh, not, not providing a path to the basement access door seems odd to me because people are gonna want to, they don't wanna get muddy to go into that basement. And then so they're gonna add to it and then what, they, they could necessarily, what was, didn't we have testimony about what the percentage, um, impervious would be?
One, one and a half percent, yeah, they, 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 they.
They could admit it, but I'm still, then they were getting, selling even closer to the limit of that percentage.
Comments I'm raising are just being realistic.
No, I remember we mentioned a pathway to that door, yeah.
If you want a pathway to the door, like a sidewalk to a door, we can do it. That raises the impervious by one and a half percent, which is still much lower than the seventy and, and lower than the fifty. So it, it's not something that, you know, requires an additional condition prohibiting any other improvement on the lot because your ordinance entitles us to be able to do that. Or deal with stormwater without coming back before the board.
Yeah.
But if you want, we, we just said, we didn't plan for the walkway, but if you want it, we, you think it's a good idea and you want, want us to do it, we're happy to do it.
Well, we'll see what the board discusses when we discuss, I guess, it might as well be. Um, Hannah, you have a handout, you have a question for this witness, please?
Yeah, but, and correct me if this is not the right question to be asking for you guys, but is there no intended space for a washer dryer? Or is that, is that the furnace center in there, or?
Let's say, uh, there is a, uh, room for a stackable washer dryer, uh, between the, the two rear bedrooms.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if that was furnace or, okay, great, okay, so that, so that's, because that was also a question whether or not that would be used in the, the basement or not. But, okay, if that's what that means, then perfect, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Right.
Any other questions that board?
I do, but I don't know if it's. Given the location of the land of the house and the right side elevation, we have concerns about, those are windows that look directly over the opposite person's, um, the adjacent person's backyard. I mean, I did look carefully, and there's a bedroom windows about, am I right, there's a bedroom windows on that right side, not the lounge. I guess the lounge would be, be sat in mostly, I'm just thinking of.
Yeah, that's the master bedroom windows, the double windows, uh, the windows, two windows to the rear is a bathroom window.
Right.
And a single window upstairs is, uh, in the living room, but it's the top of the stairs.
Right, but the double one then, one bedroom.
That's a, the master bedroom, with the private bath.
The master bedroom windows looks over, um, the adjacent person's backyard.
Like every other house in town.
Yeah, well, yeah, not, I know the normal houses are like a long and you have some, but here it's literally right there, aiming at it, you know, I'm saying like the, the direction of the windows, yeah.
That's what my house is.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just raising it. I, um, I don't see any other race. Has anybody else on the board got questions for this witness on the architecture of this proposal? Nope, see, no, I'll let someone to the next witness.
If you allow us to go on to planning testimony, you can do that.
Yeah, we may do have this tonight, but I also, I'll listen at the board's time. We, we, we can't start new business too late in the.
So go on to plan.
Yeah, we have to. Anyway, you missed the whole two, two lessons, two, two meetings.
Appreciate it.
I have written testimony and I'm making my best to stick to it. So apologize if I'm staring down at my paper as I do this. Um, let's just do it, that's what I'm doing. So, uh, just summarizing again, the relief that we are seeking again, with the D one use variance proposed to family use is a D four variance for the floor area ratio, uh, at zero point three six three, where zero point two five is our. We have bulk variances, uh, for the minimal lot area at ten thousand three hundred and fifteen square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required. Minimum lot width of fifty-seven point three two or a hundred feet is required. Um, side yard setbacks, uh, were either eight point six nine feet to the wiper office to portal where fifteen is required and sixteen point six two to the residential property to the west where thirty-five is required, or.
We modified that to twelve point six five on both sides.
Modified it, right, twelve point six five and centering the building. Uh, the bulk variances should be viewed in the context of a C one hardship variance. Um, the relief that's requested is the result of the exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property. As the, um, M L U L states, the property is only fifty-seven point three two feet wide, is substandard in area for the zone. Uh, there's no additional width or property available to add to the site. Uh, the adjacent properties are, uh, built out and all undersized themselves. The area and width cannot comply. Uh, and the conforming side yard setback leaves a seven point three two foot wide area in which to construct, uh, creating the hardship where we cannot build a building that would conform to the, um, the yard setbacks, no matter what the use was. As to the use variance, uh, the board made grant use variances where special reasons exist. These are the positive criteria. There's generally two circumstances that satisfy the special reasons. The, the typical one you have is where, uh, the project carries out a purpose of zoning. Uh, less typically, but also, uh, within, within the, um, within the law is that a refusal of the project would result in undue hardship on the applicant. The argument of an undue hardship is not a common argument in favor of new variants. It's not one that, and you've even, you've never heard. Uh, however, it is my opinion that it applies in this particular instance. And undue hardship exists, excuse me, where a property is not recently adapted to a conforming use when it results in economic inutility. It's basically that the site cannot be developed into a conforming use. Assuming that variance is from the bulk standards, this seven point three two foot wide, um, buildable area that relief could be granted from all sorts of, um, the standards, the buffering requirements. The property would ultimately allow for a twenty-five hundred and thirty-three square foot building, gross square footage. Review of the permitted uses in the zone, which we went through earlier, really shows that there's, there's only really two things that could, that could fit within that profile, that would be an office or a medical office, that would be viable at that size. Certainly a theater or community building or funeral home would not be appropriate at twenty-five hundred and thirty-three square feet. However, a commercial use would require a new driveway meeting DOT standards. That requires a two-way driveway that would have to be in the center of the property, twenty-four feet wide. We would be required to have a twelve-foot edge clearance from the edge of the property on the end. With that constraint, the parking can only be really constructed as it is on the, on the proposed plan where we would have the entry drive-in and aisle way and parking in front of it. There's not room to situate additional parking. You can go sideways within the lot and get it down one side. With the need for trash facilities, um, and access into the building, you are still limited to three parking spaces. This would then really permit an eight hundred and fifty square foot office or a four hundred and fifty square foot medical office. Put you at a four hundred and fifty square foot medical office with three parking spaces is not a viable use. Um, simply, when you have a doctor, uh, an assistant and a patient parking there. And when the next patient shows up, you sit in the waiting room, there's nowhere for them to park. Um, an eight hundred and fifty square foot office with three parking spaces, I think similarly, um, to go through the effort of constructing it would be, um, would not be a viable use. And while you may look at that and say, well, that is not total inutility on its own, uh, commercial use would require larger vehicles, as we discussed earlier, to access the site for deliveries and trash pickup. Due to the geometry of the road, of Route twelve, we talked about how it pumps out. And we have kind of an awkward angle here where the road is, is angling away from the site. Uh, where the curb is angling away and then the road's curving back. Um, you, you have, um, a requirement where you're gonna need some wider radiuses to accommodate these vehicles. And, and so when you look at it as having a twenty-four foot wide driveway and having twenty-foot radiuses on, on your curb entrances, we're suddenly sixty-four feet in width, which is wider than what the property is, it would extend beyond the limits. It would not meet the DOT's requirements, uh, for, for the twelve-foot edge clearance. Certainly you could ask for relief from the DOT, uh, but that relief wouldn't extend beyond the property line. And negative edge clearance is, um, not something I've ever seen them entertain. Ultimately, because of the specifics of this property, any conforming use on the site would require the construction of a new driveway that would not be committable by the DOT. Without access, the property can't be developed. Without access, the property is unable to be utilized and there is total inutility of the property.
So as part of an undue hardship argument, the fact that this property can't be developed in accordance with any of either the permitted uses or conditional uses makes it so that our proposed use of, of residential use is actually the only use that is viable for this lot, correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, if it's not allowed to be a residential use, it's essentially been zoned into economic inutility.
That is correct. In the alternative, and the more common standard is that the property is particularly suited to the proposed use and advances one or more purposes of zoning. The property is particularly suited to the two-family use. The surrounding area, again, contains a number of residential homes and was itself a residential lot. Not saying that it, it currently, it is, uh, but historically, this has always been a residential lot with, again, a single family and then a two-family, single family, so a mix of both single and two-family homes in the surrounding area. The proximity to other residential properties, the size of the lot and the access issues for non-residential uses makes this lot particularly suitable. The project also advances several purposes of zoning, specifically purposes, I'm gonna combine them here a little bit, purposes A, um, to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and H, to encourage the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of such facilities and routes which result in congestion or blight. By giving safe access to the property where conforming use could not, um, the proposals, again, also has a lower intensity of traffic, as documented in the traffic impact statement that was provided in an otherwise permitted use and reduces the potential for traffic incidents in this particular, um, really difficult location entering into the main street circle or exiting, depending on which direction somebody's coming. Um, we are advancing both of those, both of those purposes of zoning. Additionally, it advances purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential. Uh, by providing an opportunity for new housing within the borough, um, with um, walking access both to the shops in the immediate vicinity and a little bit more of a lot, but downtown. You, you are, uh, providing an additional location for new housing opportunities. To the floor area ratio variance, the standard for the floor area variance is based on if the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area. So is the increase, you know, the increased intensity associated with it. This is a more typical zoning control for non-residential uses, right? Because the greater the floor area you have, the greater the intensity of the uses. You have more utility usage, right? Sewer is based on square footage, water demand is based on square footage, the traffic generation is based on square footage. The required parking is based on square footage, so the more square footage you have, the more intensity you have, the more utility demand, the more traffic, the more parking you need. In our case, the total floor area, the structure doesn't increase the intensity of the use. Um, we have a number of bedrooms, it has a required number of, um, of gallons, whether those bedrooms are slightly bigger or slightly smaller. It doesn't impact the intensity of use, it doesn't change the traffic generation or the, the parking requirements, um, required by the property. This site, um, as we already described, provides more than adequate parking. We need the impervious, impervious coverage requirements. We have, uh, appropriate utility services, we have water, we have sewer, we have electric, all confirmed. We have a letter of no interest from the DOT, we have a lower. We have a lower traffic generation and parking generation over a permitted use. Overall, the proposed two-family home has a lower intensity to a permitted use and is more than capable of accommodating the increased floor area. The increased floor area is honestly a benefit as it provides a better unit for the tenants. I mean, if you look at the home that is can't do that because the rest of the board can't see. Why, why have it still up? I do. Bear with me one second. There's a lot of faffing for, uh, a point, but. So if we look at the house that is two over, two house, two lots to the west, that that house is a duplex, much smaller footprint. It's only a two-story home. Um, so we, we got it, but it's, you know, smaller units. It's, um, less accommodating to to a tenant and certainly making, um, making it so that there's more than enough usable space within there and for storage. Um, I think that the basement is of benefit to the application is um, the garage is to use for parking space. This was already testified to, and so providing a place for people to store their stuff that isn't a garage certainly, certainly is a benefit. As you know, every variance needs to satisfy not only the positive, but the negative criteria. For the negative criteria, it must be found that the product does not create a substantial detriment to the public good or create a substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The proposed project will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good. As we discussed, it's less intense than a permitted use. There's really no features that would create a nuisance. Certainly, we've discussed the uh, sump pump and the discharge to make sure that we put it in a, in a place that is uh, appropriate and doesn't create an issue. Uh, we've discussed um, adding additional trees, putting in fencing to provide screening. Uh, that would be appropriate for the property and have agreed to those conditions which, um, go to um, to thank you for a second here. Uh, the, the conditions that, that go to, uh, address the concerns that the board had and um, you know, when we, when we look at this as well from the zone plan and the zone ordinance, when we first, um, had the, the email come in that said, this is in TC zone, not the CB zone. Um, I was in my office in my basement and it was like nine o'clock at night and I had pure panic attack because the last thing you want to do is teleply it. Hey, guess what? We're going for a use variance. Um, and so I tried to figure out how, how did this happen? You know, what, what was the path? And as part of that, I was looking at even at that point, the two thousand and three, um, master plan review. And the reason, as I read in the, in that for taking this from the TC zone or out of the CB zone and putting it through the TC zone is yes, one, you're looking to consolidate lots and make some bigger tracks and, and have a different style of use here. But really it was to take the retail service businesses that are allowed in the CB zone and keep them on Main Street, keep them on Stangle, keep them where they belong, where people are walking for service businesses and not have them in this location. I think there was a little bit of discussion at the beginning of the meeting. Didn't follow it perfectly, um, about some of that, about what um, you know, wanting, running all of your attorneys that are on Main Street, no offense, Steve, um, off Main Street. And this would be kind of the place where you would want to put them. Um, it wasn't about removing the residential. The residential, if it exists, is allowed to stay. Um, so really the, the change and the reason for the change, we're, we're not impacting that, right? We're not, we're not saying I want to put in a barber shop. I'm not saying, um, you know, I want to put in some sort of retail sales um, facility here. This is,
you know, it's a, it's a fair to say that residential uses are actually permitted as long as they're existing. So that the fact that there's a residential use here is, uh, is not residential use that's being proposed. It's not so foreign or different to the zone.
Yeah, and that gets into the enhanced quality of proof on, on the use variance in the Medici standard, right? We need to reconcile that the the proposed use was omitted from the ordinance. That, um, you know, a new residential two-family house isn't permitted um, in, in this space. But at the same time, the ordinance allows for residences within the zone or certified residences and they're, they're allowed to remain. I mean, it's, it's not that we're trying to put something industrial in a residential district, residential and industrial district. This is a district that allows for residential to exist within it. And I'm not calling this a conditional use in any way, but you know, it is conditionally permitted within, within the zone that you could have a, a residence in here. I think you, you know, at the, at the end of the day, I, you know, I understand the borough's uh, goals to try and consolidate lots and, and make bigger tracks for the, you know, theaters and, um, you know, thing, things like that. This lot has a very particular location where it needs the house next door to say yes to it. It needs the house next door to not say yes to it. Right? You need, you need a number of these existing residential properties. Um, and the, frankly, hasn't worked the way it is. Uh, I don't think anybody's given up on a house that easily. So
In, in other words, in order to consolidate these lots, in order to have one of the permitted uses, you need all of these property owners to join in and agree, um, to consolidate their lots, tear down all of their houses and put up a permitted use.
Right, so our ability to conform would require those lots to do that.
So i- in terms of the negative criteria, do you see any substantial detriment to the public good? Um, if this variance is granted?
No.
Or, or any of the variances for granted?
No.
And, um, in terms of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, do you see a substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance since residential uses are actually permitted as long as they're already existing?
No, I don't.
And, um, in fact, the, some of the borough's, uh, goals to protect and enhance the integrity of the existing residential districts within the borough, although this isn't a zone, there are residential uses all around here that are complemented by our proposed use, correct?
That is correct.
Um, and employing strategies to encourage community and economic development within the borough by having our ability to have this type of use, um, that is mixing well both with the residential and business district. Uh, does that en- enhance that goal?
I think it does. I think the ability to have, again, more customers for the businesses.
And again, integrating the residential and commercial segments of Fleming and Borough to benefit the entire community by making this vacant parcel actually capable of being developed. Does that enhance that goal?
It certainly does because again, otherwise there's not a there's not a permitted use that we should build upon the property.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Other professionals?
Uh, yeah, um, I have to say, uh, I think that the testimony addressed each of the variances. The board will have to, you guys will have to weigh as to whether the variance is satisfied, the criteria is satisfied, but um, but I think Mr. Muster addressed the, the various use, the FAR, the bulk variances. Um, and went to the positive and negative criteria. I don't have any questions on this testimony, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Right, well, my, as your report states. My, yeah, um, two-family residential uses not permitted, they had to come in. Existing residential uses are allowed.
Yes.
Uh, new, single-family residential uses allowed?
No.
In the, in the zone that they thought they were in, couldn't get the input, correct information, was, is it single-family use allowed? Was it allowed in that CB district?
I, yeah, I believe, I believe that's the case.
I believe it'll have both one and two family.
Right, then, exists then, to me, existing is an important point in just, they're suggesting that this is an existing residential use because it used to be made as an eventual
I, I don't think, I don't think I don't think they're saying it's an existing residential use because they have a right to continue it, but they're, but they're I think accurately reflecting that the site was used as a residential use previously, but that they're here for a use variance for the two families.
So we don't have to consider whether it was an existing use. It's a, it's a new two-family residential use that they're asking for variance.
I think the, the former use is, is relevant to the board's consideration, just as you would consider the, the surrounding uses in the context of the area, but it's not but it's not relevant from the perspective of giving them the right to residential use on the site.
And they would need the same D one variance for a single-family home, although, although they would then the max floor area ratio and, and some other aspects now. Basement concern could be addressed that way with a single-family home on this lot, is that right?
Um, they would still have, uh, they would still have the set, the setback variances. I'm certain those would apply. They would, I think likely still have an FAR variance, the, the average size of new residential homes, uh, are I believe more than, at least if not more than twenty-five hundred square feet these days. And so that would, that would continue to generate an FAR variance if, if the board makes the assumption that a new single family would be at or, or greater than the, uh, the average new home size in this. Uh, and, and yes, they must leave the use variance. So many of those variances would remain, but to your point, the board with one less unit, perhaps there'd be more flexibility. That could be sought.
When you, when you realized that you needed the D one variance, did you advocate, did you have to consider not doing the two-family residential use and, and, and would you sit down to a single-family residential use?
Honestly, we think that the, the two-family use is, is the better use for this type of lot and it provides, uh, another uh, opportunity for, uh, a residential unit, but this, this had all been designed and, um, and prepared for a two-family. That's, it was, it was permitted in the CB zone, so we didn't consider changing our whole plan to go to a single family. We wanted to present forward with the, with the two families because we thought that's the better plan.
All right, anybody else on the board? Um, I presume I have a question. I was, you don't? Nobody? Questions for this one?
For, here, I'm just worried about the minimum set yardback. You, you compare commercial and residential. Was there a reading on that chart?
So the, it's the, it's the adjoining use that that was, it's not, it's not based on the use on the property. It's based on your adjoining use.
Got you, got you. I asked him the same question when I read her report.
Anybody, um, on my board online have any questions for this witness on regard to planning testimony? Anybody in person have any questions? We don't see any, hold on. Anybody online have any questions, um, for this witness? No, I don't see any hands, so we'll move along with that then. Then Zach, can you, did that conclude your testimony?
Uh, it does. I'd like to wrap up. Um, I want to do a count though. One, two, three.
Oh, how many we have?
Four.
That is on, yeah.
We have, we have Alan and Dennis online and
I saw Mr. Champion wasn't on anymore, so that may be.
Yeah, he seems to have dropped off, but there's seven.
So I just, it may be, um, no, that's it for my testimony. I can give a, a very quick wrap up.
Yes.
Actually, before you do, uh, mentor, do we?
Open up to the public, yes.
General comment, I know we've asked questions and I know this is here, but procedurally, we still have to.
Public comments generally, I was, I was for this witness, but anything that can comment generally for this application before we wrap up and close the public hearing. I don't see anybody with a raised hand online, um, also. Don't see anybody. So, no, we have, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you. Quickly, permitted uses of office, of medical, childcare, indoor and outdoor recreation, theaters, higher education and training, community buildings, club facilities, animal hospital, funeral homes, research facilities, health and fitness facilities, and residential uses existing as a date of the adoption of this ordinance um, are permitted. Um, all of those can't be built on this site. Um, conditional uses can't be built on this site. The only thing that really can be built on a site is a single-family or duplex residential use. Um, we think that this is an appropriate scaled project for a duplex. It's not inconsistent with what's already on in the area in terms of a mix of single-family residential uses and duplexes already there. Um, we know it's a transition commercial district and the, the goal of the, the borough was to transition the zoning into something different if possible. The problem is that it's not possible for this very unique and peculiar lot in terms of its shape, size and location right next to Route twelve and on, on the DOT. Um, this isn't something that anybody else can point and say, you know, you grant it to them, you got to grant it to us too, because this lot is what we call in legal parlance funky. Um, and it's so unique that it's appropriate for, uh, a use variance relief and a D four variance relief. The D four variance relief, as, um, Ms. McMahon has indicated, would be um, necessary, whatever type of use that you put on this property. The C variance relief would be necessary for any type of use that you've put on this property because our width is seven feet on the building envelope. That's what makes this property so very unique. I know we're not asking for, or hanging our hat on the fact that it was a residential use previously. We're not seeking that. That's why we're seeking a use variance. But it is important for the board to recognize that we're not proposing something that's completely foreign to what was already on that lot previously. It was a residential use before. It's residential uses all around it. Um, we've agreed to all the conditions that we've discussed with the board's professionals and to think that this is an appropriate use variance, D four variance and C variance relief, subject to the conditions that the board, um, would impose. If you have any questions or concerns or need any additional information from me before you deliberate, I would like the opportunity to try, uh, to try to address those concerns. This isn't a major developer here coming in on an application. This is a mother, a, a father and daughter who, uh, had an investment opportunity here. Uh, but this isn't a major developer and it's very expensive to keep coming back before boards. Um, we appreciate you staying late tonight to be able to hear this application too, to try and get it done in one evening. But if you have any reservations about the application, uh, I'd like the opportunity to try and make you happy.
All right, that being said, do we have any questions or to address before we close the public hearing? And discuss.
Go again.
Anna, yeah?
Sorry, I just had, I just popped in my head right now and I just want to, just a quick clarification. Did we, what was the, um, uh, will there be a, a additional sidewalk on that side or did we, were we waiting for, uh, the building? Well, we, we said we were maybe waiting for something.
If you want it, you got it. If you, if it doesn't matter, we'll, we'll comply to the building code.
My only thinking is that I do see like school buses over there and they do pick up kids and just having that little extra bit of sidewalk, I think if there's ever kids coming to get picked up from there would make that a little easier, but I actually, well, I don't know if it makes it easier, but.
What we're talking about is on the side of the house.
Oh, well, I was talking about what's in front. Is that, because I know that, I think there's a sidewalk to the residence to the left, but not, is it in the front too?
Yes.
There is? Okay, then nevermind. That was my, I got confused then. Thank you. And that's my clarification.
More about a path really Hannah, than a sidewalk.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you. That's perfect then.
Right, thank you. Anybody else online? I don't see any other hands raised.
Then I'll
In person, yeah, um, no, we need to close.
I was gonna make a motion to close the public.
Thank you. We need to do a lawful closing of the public, anyone all in favor?
All in favor, should be suspicious.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then anybody out of favor?
Who opposed?
Opposed, too late, but fancy.
Anyone want to say no?
Oh, okay, all right. So we'll close the public hearing?
Yes.
Moving to board discussion time. Just ready to go, kind of first?
I, I, I'm happy to go first. I, I mean, I, I mean, um, I, I'm, I moved by the testimony, the, uh, the planning testimony and, and I think you laid it out very directly. Like if you were to build, if we were, if, because of the setback on the commercial side and on the residential side and what we If we were, if, because of the setback on the commercial side and the residential side and what we have in the ordinance and what's listed as permitted uses within the TC zone. You can't build anything, like I I mean, and and so I I'm I'm moved by the, by the hardship argument about. There needs to be something else um allowed for here, I think that this is a. I think this, I I I'm, I think this is, this is probably the best thing, what what could do in this vacant lot, this has been sitting vacant for a little while uh now. Um, and, you know, as much as we want to over time have the 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 TC zone and have these other kinds of uses. Um, but I know that we've talked in, you know, previously about, um, especially, you know, Route twelve coming in from. You know, the Frenchtown part of the universe into town as a gateway and wanting to see perhaps over time an intensification of uses. Um, towards, towards the, you know, towards Main Street, um, you know, there's uh. Just the given the the nature of the this lot and then also just, and I think this will also testify to this. This series of skin and little lots there, those kinds of projects that we envisioned in the TC zone. I think this part south of Route twelve, I think is more appropriate for the parcels to the west. Where we've got larger lots or uh places where, you know, contiguous lots can be assembled perhaps a little bit easier. Um, than existing residential, the residential. Um, uses that are to the west of here, the five or six properties between the 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 subject property. And till you get to what's now the swing set factory, it used to be the real estate office, um, over there. Um, they've been residential, you know. Use for as long as I've lived in this part of town, like they they're stable, um, they're not. Tenants, people have been living there, people wanna live there, you know, it seems like it it fits into the to to the.
Hmm.
Um, the the character of that block, you know, in terms of of the use of 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 residential being over there. And yes, right past this block, this parcel, we get into to to the Wiker building, we have the circle, we've got the shopping center. We definitely do have commercial, you know, uh, to 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 next to.
I'm even considering really that this lot would be a in the commercial aspect of this.
Yeah.
I see residential is the possibility.
Yeah.
However, I feel that this proposal fills the lot to its capacity. We have the problem with the basement and the sump and spitting out onto somebody else's area, that that's my concern that.
Yeah.
And I understand the timing of why they didn't then go back and think about just putting a single family, a smaller. Lot, because even compared to the other ones and the the lot, the lots are similar width. The have, the 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 buildings that are proposed are small and I have real concerns where we're like maxing out what we can put on the lot, am I?
No, I I hear you.
Some of those water aspects and some of, you know, the the living aspects on the on the plot.
I I hear you, but I I also, but I also looking at the dimensions of what the, and Beth alluded this before, in terms of the size of what typical residential units tend to be. Um, they are built bigger and what the market is at the moment, like, we've got two units here that are, you know. One of them's about two thousand square feet, one's a little under two thousand square square feet, I think it's less than fifteen hundred and something like that, you know. That's, that's for a three bedroom, fifteen hundred square foot unit, that's kind of typical of what gets built nowadays as opposed to. Um, uh, uh, you know, maybe what was built before, you know, and 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 I just. I think that, I I hear what you're saying about the size, I don't have a problem with size, I think that, one of the things that I do appreciate is that they've cited the the structure. Essentially behind the adjacent residential use and it kind of does provide, even though they are very close to each other. It does provide a buffer in sorts and I, and I think you raised this question before about the the master bedroom window. Looking out into the backyard, it's better to be looking out into a backyard than looking out into your neighbor's bedroom. I'm just saying that directly, having experienced that because. So it's a, so I I think that if it was more, I I see, so I think that there's a, um. There's a, there is, there is, there does seem to be demonstrated an attention to that particular uh concern about the the proximity and the size. Um, and I think that, again, they've, they've uh agreed to conditions around. Centering it, uh, Beth's concerns about some of the aesthetics on the front elevation, uh, the commitment to that moving it. And centering it would also perverse support, somewhat of what, one of my concerns was, which I think was addressed in the testimony, it's screening against the commercial. Property, the Wiker property, which this this seems to be able to preserve some of the existing landscape buffer and they've also provided testimony that they would. Do offensive, you know, some satisfaction of our professionals, I think, you put all that together, I think it makes sense, so, and that's, that's, that's where I'm. That's where I'm at, and I think that, yeah, the long term, we might want the south side of twelve to look very different, but I think that. We can't hold, we can't keep this lot vacant until someone decides to buy twelve of them and do something big, you know, I think that's what I'm, that's where I'm at.
Things big and and I have real particular concerns with the water in that area. Especially as you're taking away trees that absorb the water and then you're adding in a basement that spits out water from the sump pumps. That we're gonna create a muddy mess for it then, even then, the their use of the rest of the yard or. The adjoining properties and I'm, I'm, it bothers, always bothers me that we don't have the people look, who are coming next to it, whether. I always worry that they didn't get noticed and they don't realize, because they, you know, there's not even a letter from them or anything about they don't mind it, I'd love to hear, you know, I mean, I.
But they.
I miss hearing from that, but they officially had the opportunity.
But they're not here, and we have, we have had many applications where, where, where water's been an issue, I'm not gonna mention names. But like, where the room is full of neighbors who are deeply concerned about the water runoff and it's not been, we're not seeing anybody, you know.
Right, that doesn't necessarily mean those things won't become problems just because they're not here, but, sorry, Mark, you look like, I'm, I'm, which one are you, look like you were?
No, I was letting Jeff finish, I was just gonna say my, just my two cents, I kinda agree with what Jeff said, I I believe the proposal fits. In the property given with the restrictions of what's there, uh, I do believe the house, centering the house, I think would make it better. Uh, water drainage coming out the back, even though the, uh, I I don't like seeing it being directed to somebody else's property. Cause my house was a newer house, I dealt with that, of the neighbors dumping online and it, it's. It it just doesn't make good neighbors.
Right.
Uh, the basement walkway, which you said you would uh put in access. And then I agree with Beth's comments on the front aesthetics of the windows, so, uh, and then the, the only other thing is. Uh, because it's a rental or whatever, I don't really, it's not our dis- discussion, it's just that you guys have a. Good spot to put the trash cans, so not seen from the road, because a lot of people have those, even though it's not a commercial thing that's driving it, but. Just this, like a good spot that you don't see it from the road, because you're gonna have a nice look of building, that you don't want these ugly trash cans sitting out front. So, that's.
Yeah, because I probably, I probably were gonna put them in that um driveway turn area. And then, yeah, screen it maybe on that, because everything, yeah. Anybody else have any comments, prayers, I'd be like to hear them on board, online, oh, sorry, don't give them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the the FAR ratio with the tent, with the short lot to begin with. The fact that we don't have any factual information around where the water table is and the flow. Notwithstanding, I mean, this is a TC district, we weren't supposed to have two family dwellings or any residential dwellings. Um, the idea, well, do we keep this lot vacant indefinitely, maybe because it's bumped up against the corner lot. Maybe eventually things will change, um, you put a new, right, you put a new structure there. It becomes more difficult to make that change down the road, certainly. Um, these things take a lot of time, it takes years to shift. Um, you know, a, a, a particular zone in any, any, uh, uh, urban planning. Or anything of that nature. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at, I'm a little concerned about size and and I still can't get over the fact that. So we zoned a TC, um, I understand this particular lot size, but when you look at the adjacent lot sizes, they're all single family. A much smaller footprint, it was fifties, sixties, whatever that original was, so this does. Is it appropriate for that lot size? I don't know, I mean, what standards do I use, do I think about as a residential, do I think about with just the TC zone? So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah. Thanks. Um, any of our members online Hannah, or Dennis is waving his hand physically.
Yeah, I had a question, when we were talking about the water, um, someone made a comment, this is not a site plan. Would that be a step, after we decide, if they move forward, is there a site plan that would address the water issue or no?
No.
No.
Okay, and and so, um, uh, my my concern is, you know, there was no discussion about. Um, putting some kind of retention for the water to keep it in the back of the.
They're not required to.
Required to do that, it's a very, it's not, it's not, yeah.
I I understand they're not required to do it, but if I was a neighbor and I was gonna get water that was coming from that house. That's a problem, that it's not staying within their property, so with the basement. You know, I think we all have it, where we have some pumps that run even when it's been dry for two weeks. So that, that's my only concern, um, it's not a livable basement, but, um, the the concern about the water. But regarding the, the property, um, I I think having something there versus nothing. Uh, the design looked good and I I don't see down the road having something else. Wha- what our goal is for that area, this property, I don't think really fits in the way it's, you know, next to other residential. Properties, um, so my only concern is the water, I would not wanna be a neighbor next door to that.
What, Hannah, do you have any, any questions to raise?
Um, no, I mean, I I agree a little bit with Dennis in that maybe not necessarily a retention base or anything or that extreme, but if, you know, if. Cause it is a concern and it keeps popping up, if there's any form of landscaping that could also kind of. Be arranged for the area in which they're redirecting the water, that could, you know, there's certain plants that certainly are native that. You know, help drain or good with uh or good with watered areas, um, because I I do agree in, you know. Making sure it's undue stress towards neighbors and things and whatnot around that area as well would be a concern for me. Um, but I do agree in that, um, you know, it's a unique space, it's a small space, I'm not sure if it's the tipping point. For anything else in terms of changing the the zone and and telling everyone else to sell and for someone to buy. Um, I'm not super concerned about that, it's more just, again, you know, making sure we're creating a good community with that, with all the residents there, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, considering it used to be part of the Wiker lot, I think people probably, like, oh, they said it was.
They, they think my previous owners, but it wasn't a lot. It was a single family house.
But it was, yeah, but it was, what I mean is, people, maybe people are imagining it as that one lot with the Wiker, I'm just. It's irrelevant, it's just my comment.
Can I just suggest an additional condition while you're deliberating?
Okay.
A condition that we will do a testing for the water table to confirm that the the elevation of the basement. Will be one foot above the water table, so that would not be an issue.
Over the you, so you you're, you're asking for a, that's something that's gonna go through the construction code official, you're gonna ask. That you only have a basement if you can document that you, the bottom of the basement.
Conditioning that we can document that the water table is, that the basement will be one foot above the water table and we'll provide.
Like, you're suggesting this, you wouldn't have a sump pump.
No, we'll have the sump pump, but we're gonna provide the documentation that, um, where the water table is, that's.
Currently for before constructions.
Right.
Yeah, the 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 building will require a sump pump regardless, even if it was a crawl space, if there's open space below grade.
Yeah, that's, well, I don't wanna get too far into it, but we'll, we'll have the sump pump, but as a condition of this approval, we'll, we'll establish where. The water table is and that our uh foundation will be one foot above our basement.
And subject to the construction code official's approval, that's always. Because it's not a site plan, so once the board votes, they have no more jurisdiction over the application.
Well, that's why I'm saying it's a condition of the approval, so that we have to provide that documentation.
Right, ma'am chair, if I could, I think it might address your question and I'm gonna direct the, well, my question to you, so what happens if?
Hmm.
It doesn't, let's say the one, your your proof doesn't show.
Then we'll have to return to the board.
Okay, so that that's why I think the concern was.
They will remove the basement.
Yeah, remove the basement.
Or remove the basement.
Well, then we'll be retaining jurisdiction through the condition, if if that's, if that's how we're gonna work, that's why I was asking the question, so.
Yes, but what, to the plan, if, if, if they help prove it's going to be one foot below. Do we, do we establish what the, um, what the.
I don't know what it is.
Benchmark is for the basement.
They, they, they generally, they generally.
Nine feet.
They generally testify that it will be at an elevation similar to the bottom of the DOT's basin in the middle of the circle.
We, we didn't get a level for the bottom of the basement proposal, so therefore we can't put a condition. And the testimony is, we can't, we can't impose something a foot below something we don't have.
Yeah, I think it's about, it's not that the basement, it's not about conditioning where the basement elevation is gonna be, it's about conditioning. That the basement must, the bottom of the basement must be not less than one foot above the the water. And if that means that the basement can only be crawl space, so be it, I I believe that's what they're trying to do.
They're gonna have to remove the things, if they, if they fall short of that one foot.
Exactly, yeah.
Because they're not seasonal one, right?
So we're not verified.
But are we leaving it open that if that happens, they raise the whole building up?
Just to put it in factual terms. Actual terms as to what's on the record, their plan says the first floor is one eighty four point five. The architect said the basement will be nine foot uh below that, so it'll be one uh one seventy um five point five. That's, that's, that's the factual evidence and as to the acquistors' testimony earlier, their plans, you know, the uh DOT. Stormwater basin in the middle of the circles, bottom of that, at one seventy.
Six.
One seventy six, so their basement as currently proposed is about a foot, well, whatever, half a foot, uh, lower than the bottom of the DOT basin.
And the DOT basin can't, it's gotta be, at least on the current rules, at two feet above the, the minimum two.
I really have no idea.
But the, but the point is, we'll do the testing to establish the water table and will be at least a foot above that. Or we'll have to adjust the basement, but that that satisfies concerns regarding the water.
Well, if I may, just to follow up on that, just so we're very clear on what the condition's gonna be. It's, I understand exactly what you're saying, but in the event that the 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 testing does not prove, and I know this. You're very confident it will be and hopefully it will be, but the end event isn't, does that mean, and how we're gonna word this condition, that the board's retaining jurisdiction? So that you have to come back before the board with amended uh plans to show that you're coming in with a crawl space? Or are we saying that you can then just go to the construction official with a crawl space, provided the crawl space is at least one foot above ground?
The ladder.
And I think we're also.
Remember, understanding what that means?
And I think we, yeah, I think we also have to stipulate that the, the, the first floor level I stipulated on the plans doesn't change, because that's. Otherwise they could lift the whole building up.
Yeah, correct, we don't, right.
So this is presumptive, um, on the cognitive, I don't know, the right word is, add it in. That that doesn't change too, because they've all already said that they could effectively change it from a nine foot. Clearing space, but they could go to a, right now, you don't, what was the code, that's the minimum on the code. Anyway, they, I want my rack to. Shut the basement, but like.
So the condition will be, the, the, the only thing that would adjust would be the size of the basement, not the height.
Not the, not the, not the first floor, as I'll.
Essentially then, they would conduct soil testing, they would have an engineer certify if the seasonal high groundwater elevation.
Hmm.
That would go to the construction code official of the board, in addition is the, 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 this element of the, the foundation, the basement, whatever it ends up to be. Crawl space has to be at least a foot above that elevation, whether or not they put a sump pump in or not, that's, that's what they're saying.
Gonna put the sump pump.
Well.
I think it's Melissa.
Yeah, Melissa, um, yeah, I just wanted to, I'm just like, well, that, you know, okay, if that's what they want to, a condition, uh, Melissa. And yeah, we, any comments please or input please?
Everything I had pretty much noted down has been covered already, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And are you happy as, um, with your environmental hat on with regards to the testimony that they had with the number of trees that they, we had seven original? New report and then we're coming, we're gonna, they're gonna put four back?
I believe we had deferred it to shade tree, so.
Oh, sorry, yes, yours was the impervious, I apologize, sorry. All right, I'll assume you're wonderfully happy with it then at this point. Um any other discussion if um. If we are minded under that condition, we could, if we get to um. Did we get to Joe, any conditions that we would want to system?
Have you been taken notes?
You want to remind me what we, it might be in.
Well, we have the the general condition of complying with the the professionals reports as as discussed and modified during the testimony. Uh one of them, uh which we've discussed quite a bit, is re-centering the um the building on the site. We have equal side side yard setbacks. Uh they agreed to uh include additional uh trees or fencing along the. I I in my notes, I have the Wicker property line, I'm trying to remember, that was Easter, thank you. Uh and as well as making sure that they um uh preserved the hedge, working with Wicker and any um. That that additional fencing or and or landscaping, they will reasonably work with our. Professionals on the final design. And they have that, um they will work with um the board's planner on redesigning the. The French facade uh of the building, including uh increasing the front windows to double windows. And will work with our, as well as, excuse me, uh moving the uh the front door. Uh to be more in line with the garage, understanding the limitations of that, but work reasonably working with. The board's uh professionals um doing so to meet their require, their requirements and approvals. They will uh condition that the uh basement will not be used for any inhabitable space and only for storage and mechanics. Uh they agreed to add a pathway, a walkway uh to the basement door on the side of the building. The very complicated condition that we just discussed regarding the water table. Uh which will have to work out the exact language of, but it will essentially say that the basement, uh they will conduct a water test. Uh to be certified by an engineer of the 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 water, the height of the water table, of the elevation of the water table. Uh and the results cannot have the basement or that must require the basement to be at least one foot above, whatever that water table may be. Without increasing um the height, overall height of the building, or I should say the elevation, not just the height. Feet lies for elevation from the ground floor, the the ground. And um if they don't, they are able to convert that to a crawl space, provided that. The same applies, the crawl space is at least one foot above the water table, and that would be. Um provided in connection with applying for construction permit. Okay? All those conditions are.
And um did you wanna add in something, Mark, when we're talking about the trash cans, like at the front, some of the screen ends.
You don't have to.
No, it's a suggestion, okay. All right, I'm I'm just wanting to make sure we grab that in.
Yeah.
Okay, um so with that being said, oh, Hannah, something?
Just, do we wanna make a quick comment about like the trees that they'll be, when they'll be adding more trees that they should, you know. Did the shade tree ever release a list of trees that they recommend for area or native trees or?
The borough has, the borough has a list.
They do, okay, so just making sure that it falls along those lines.
I would, I would recommend that uh the uh any revised planting plan and like and also the light fixtures, I I think that was not included in the list. Um uh we should just be reviewing approved by board professionals, right?
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, anybody got anything else, most everybody's. Um with those conditions, so um I guess, does anybody feel comfortable raising a motion?
I'll make a motion, I will make a motion to grant B one use variance D four. Uh uh what's it called? If they are variance and the associated C variances um. Subject to the conditions that we just rattled off and I don't need to restate out loud.
All right.
So roll call, uh let me go through, uh Mr. Champion?
He's left.
Oh, this one, I'm sorry.
Not eligible to vote.
Okay, Ms. Giffen?
No.
Okay, Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
No.
Mr. Show?
Yes.
Mr. Uh Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Eckel?
No.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
A vote of four to three, does that?
Got to tell you, folks, that's that's extremely disappointing. We've taken a property that can't be used for anything. And voted, you know, without articulating a reason why after has been. And disagreeing to all the conditions. That makes it. Very difficult for these property owners. I think we established that undue hardship and it's. You know, the idea of leaving a piece of property vacant for as long as possible, hoping that it's going to be zone. I gotta express the way I do. I've reported sort of a lot, I wanted to express the way I do.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your time and your work, um.
I appreciate the board's professionals' comments and review on the.
Thank you.
Listen, can I just ask a question, maybe I missed it, wasn't the vote four or three?
Yes, it's it's a use variance who requires a vote of five, minimum vote of five.
Thank you, okay, I didn't realize, okay, thank you.
If board members didn't realize that and want to review their their vote, I would I would request a a. A revote if that changes anybody's mind. If they didn't realize that a four in favor, three against vote means a denial, I would ask for reconsideration.
That man assumes that people voted at the end based on what other people have done, and I'd like to think that my board members voted, had they chose to vote on the way we call.
Well, I'm just asking if any member, if that changes their mind, I would like. An opportunity for there to be a revote if they didn't realize that that was the threshold for a vote.
Right, I think the silence will be in.
Thanks.
Yeah. All right, item fourteen, share items, I'm just giving the hour, I'm just gonna do it next meeting, it's April eighth, twenty twenty five. Um and um committees, I wanted to get going, but as we had the discussion at the beginning of the committee's issue, I do wanna get going with some of those that are really. We'll talk about the ones that I know, we'll get moving on those, I appreciate that. All right, so item fifteen, we don't have bills because of the issue with our um secretary. Um item sixteen, executive position goes with Shum, we don't need to go to executive nature by the power.
We do not.
Thank you, so that item, I think it's sixteen or seventeen, if I'm not to scratch. Um they get an uh uh motion to adjourn.
All right, hold on, hold on, just for the record, who was the motion, who was the second?
I'll remove, hang second.
Thank you.
Bye. Motion for adjourn, all in favor?
All right.
Bye, thank you much, see you next time.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.